Mr. Chairman, we are ready. We are live.
So, good evening, everyone. It is January 20th, 2021. My name is Rob Cagnetta, and this meeting is of the, for the South Kingstown Rhode Island zoning board of review. Members present tonight are Mr. Thomas Daniels, Mr. William Mark, Mr. Bill Rosen, and Mr. Casey Charcoak. Also present is Jamie Gorman, South Kingstown interim building zoning, building official, Amy Goines, our legal counsel, and Jessica Spence, the administrative support associate. This board is made up of seven people, and five of them are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present to vote in the event that one of the five regular members is not present, an alternate will step in as in tonight. So there are five members here, and we will all be voting tonight. So applicants are here for either a variance dimensional or use, or to seek a special use permit. This board is a quasi judicial body created by the South Kingstown ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be an fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get a little carried away, and it's determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, please try to be on point and try to be brief. We'll do our best to sort of lay out the expectations for each applicant. We try not to argue, and we try to keep things civil, and we'll try to have the last petition start by 10 o'clock. So when your petition is called, we're going to go through the procedures. Jessica's going to let you know. But you want to clearly state your name and spell it for the record. So speak clearly so we can all hear you. You'll be asked to take an oath to tell the truth, and then you can present your petition along with any witnesses to testify in support. We will then ask you questions and witnesses' questions. And after the petitioner has presented all their testimony, anyone else out there with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose a particular petition, you'll also be asked to make yourself known, and again, we'll let you know how to do that. You'll also be sworn in, and then we will ask questions of each person that has come forward. Please do not direct any questions directly to anyone else. Do it through us. We will help provide those questions to whoever you're asking them to. So after hearing all the testimony and before a vote is called or is taken, we'll be asked, each board member will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. And so you're aware the variance or special use permits require four of five of us to vote in favor or against in order for the relief to be granted or denied. We will ask a lot of questions on the board, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per our South Kingstown ordinance. And so you must give testimony to support either the facts or to allow your request to be approved. So we have dimensional variances tonight. And special use permits. So for the dimensional variances or for variances, the evidence that you want the board, you want to present to the board is first, the hardship due is to, due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure, and it's not due to the general characteristics of the area. Your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part, that the granting of this variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, and that the relief you're requesting is the least relief really necessary to achieve what it is you'd like to do. And you must also show that the hardship that will be suffered if the variance is not granted will amount to a more, more than a mere inconvenience. So the special use permit that you present should, should state the following, that you're requesting one is specifically authorized by the ordinance somewhere in the zoning ordinance. This has to be authorized. If we do not, then we don't have the power to grant it. That the special use permit request meets all the criteria in our zoning ordinance that authorizes that special use, and that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. So that is what we try to do, accomplish here tonight, and in the means we're going to do it. Jessica will provide that.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. So how it will work is I'm going to, if you haven't already, all applicants should mute themselves. And once I'm done speaking, I'm going to turn off the video for any applicant whose petition is not currently being heard. At the time your petition is called, I will ask permission for you to turn on your video. Please accept that and then unmute yourself. The applicants will give all testimony, and as the chairman said, the board may ask any relevant questions. Once the applicant has completed the testimony, that is the portion of the evening where anyone who is in attendance, who is either in opposition or in support of a petition, can raise their hand to speak. If you are on a computer, if you hover over by where your name is or on the top bar, there's something that says more. If you click that, three little dots will popped up, pop up, and you can use the raise your hand function. I see the raise your hand, and you will be called upon, upon the order of who raises their hand first. If you're calling in by phone, which we do have some people calling in by phone, it is star nine to raise your hand, and star six will mute and unmute you. Once you have spoken and you've said everything that you need to say, we will mute you again. So if you had an additional question at that point, you would need to raise your hand again. Couple of things to keep in mind. All of the supporting documents and the agenda are available online at southkingstownri.com. If you were to search current zoning applications, that will bring you to them. So you can bring up anything that's been submitted to reference tonight. There is a question and answer function. That is only to be used if you're having technical issues with Zoom. We will not answer any questions pertaining to any permits with that function. You need to raise your hand at the appropriate time if you have a question. Again, we always advise you to speak clearly because not everyone is on a computer. There are people calling by phone, so the connections aren't always as good, and to always state your name. So that's about it for now.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. Is there any other business that we need to go over before we get started? No. Okay, great. So the first on the agenda tonight is the petition of Christopher G. Coe, revocable trust of 71 Main Street Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879 for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing mixed-use structure into a single family dwelling. Currently, the first story is a business use, and the second story is a single dwelling unit. Relief is required for locating dwelling units on the first floor in the CD zoning district. There are no exterior changes proposed to the structure. The lot size is 11,325 square feet. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section 402. Notes to schedule of dimensional regulations and 907 are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Christopher G. and Tracy L. Coe, trustees for the premises located at 71 Main Street, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map 571, lot 102, and is zoned CD commercial downtown. Is there anyone here tonight for this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe Mr. Keough is present, but he did submit a letter requesting a continuation.
Okay.
I have it if you'd like me to read it.
Would you please?
Sure. Submitted to our office on January 6, 2021. Jamie, as advised, I made a mistake in the butters notice that went out and mistakenly sent the cover letter from your office to me instead of the notice itself. Please continue the hearing to the February docket and send me a new notice with the February date via email so I can get the notice out to a butters ASAP. I was in town last week, but now I'm back in Florida. Thanks so much, and sorry for the inconvenience. And that was signed Christopher G. Keough.
Okay. So what is the date for our February meeting?
February 17.
Does anybody have any objection to this, or does someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Continue this too? Okay, go for it.
Do you hear me?
Yes, please, Bill.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Christopher G. Keough, revocable trust, as read by the chairman until February 17 to 2021.
Excellent. Motion is made by Mr. Rosen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Charcoak?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, the "I." Motion passes. Okay. Now we have the amended petition of Peter and Christine Nakdenis, care of Vincent Babcock, Babock, of 195 Tungstus Hill Road, Suite 203, Fairfield, Connecticut, 06825. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is proposing to construct a three-story addition on the front of the existing family dwelling around a 10 by 10 attached deck to the rear. The proposed addition will be located 35 feet from the front property line. The required setback is 40 feet. Relief of five feet is requested. The proposed additions will make the lot total area coverage 24.5 feet, 5%. The maximum lot area coverage allowed in an R30 is 20%. So the relief of 4.5% is requested. The lot size is 7,500 square feet. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section 207, for non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements. And section 401, schedule of dimensional relations, regulations, and section 907, standards of relief. Owner of the property is Peter and Christine M. Nakdenis for premises located 69 Rosebrier Ave, assessors map 96-1, lot 43, and is zoned R30. Is there someone here for this tonight?
Yeah, the Nakdenises are here, but we also have our architects here as well, and we're here, we were here with you guys in November.
Great. And I'm sorry for butchering all the names. I'll do my best to not do that. So so this is an amended petition, so this is going to be essentially a start over. Or it's, okay. So Peter and Christine, I'm assuming. Do you both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self-yog?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Could you please spell your names for the record?
It's Nakdenis is N-A-K-T-E-N-I-S.
And you're Peter?
Yes, sir.
And Christine, could you spell your first name for us?
T-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E.
Okay, great. And, and your architect is here as well?
Steve Ed, are you going to be speaking? Ed, you're unmuted. I don't know. I see both Vince. You are unmuted.
Yeah, Ed's going to present. Ed, can, are you? Can you unmute? Can you hear me now? There you go.
Yes, you can.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Right. It's okay. So who's going to start it out? Well, Mr. Babick, why don't you start by swearing yourself in? So do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self-yog?
I do.
Okay, great. Could you spell your name, please, for the record?
B-I-N-C-E-N-T. Last name, B-A-B-A-K.
Great. Okay. And who wants to start off telling us what you'd like to do?
I guess I can, Mr. Chairman. My name's Ed Diamond with Vincent Babick Architecture. My name is Ed, E-D. The last name is Diamond, D-I-A-M-O-N-D.
Very good, Mr. Diamond. So go ahead. Please tell us what the proposed changes are.
Okay, so our task for the homeowners was to design in addition to an existing 1,600 square foot cape. They're, they were in need of more living and bedroom space. We want to take the opportunity to extend the addition at the front of the property and take advantage of the 15 or the 17-foot setback. It's allowed to move towards the street. So the addition comes out 17 feet to the front property line, and we're asking relief for an additional five feet to a portion of that first floor addition to accommodate a garage. Simply put, the 17 feet won't allow for a vehicle to fit in. So we're proposing to extend that area by five feet for just a single car garage only. In addition to that, we would like to build on top of that, an additional space which would be on the second and the third floor. And just keep in mind that on those two levels, there, we won't be going over the five feet like the first floor for the garage only. Most of the space is going to be devoted to additional bedroom space and living space. The first floor will be the single car garage that I noted. Also, the mudroom foyer will be on the first floor. The second floor will be a family room and an additional bedroom. And on the top, the third level will be another bedroom and a studio. This will basically turn the 1,600 square foot small cape into approximately a 3,200 square foot structure. We're allowed 35 feet for zoning. We're going to be at three stories like other houses in the area, and we're not going to extend beyond that 35 feet in height. That's pretty much it. I could entertain any questions if you'd like.
Okay, Mr. Diamond, so how much of that 4.5% of the lot coverage is the added space for the garage, that five feet that comes out? Or, or I guess we can just ask how many square feet is that garage that sticks out the five feet?
That's 14 by 5, which is 70 square feet. And some of the other additional structures on the property include the existing deck, existing shed, existing outdoor shower stair.
So does that 70 square feet account for the four and a half percent, or is it? Is that, is it more than that? Meaning that the, the rest of the addition adds to that four and a half percent?
That 4.5% includes not only that additional amount for the garage, but also those onsite structures that were needed as part of the calculation.
Which includes the back deck as well as the shed?
Correct.
As well?
Yes.
Okay. Does that count the back stairs, or that's not part of their calculation?
It does. I don't know if you have it in front of you, in front of you or not.
Yeah.
Calculations. Yeah, those are the.
Oh, the calculations. I'm sorry if I oh, I see. Okay, and then the 17 feet then, so in order to not have the, the excess of the four and a half percent, is there a need for the 17 feet to come out? As opposed to, you know, which might bring it into compliance, let's say 15, 14 feet? I'm not quite sure how many.
In order to accommodate the bedrooms, again, we're not seeking relief for the additional 22 feet. We tried to really minimize the impact, so we're only going out five feet at the garage only. We really couldn't set back any less than the 17 feet to accommodate the bedroom space and everything else that was needed for the family.
Board members, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Diamond, Tom Daniels. Mr. Diamond, was your testimony that you're adding two bedrooms?
Correct. We're presently at two bedrooms, and we want to add an additional two bedrooms, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I would, I'd like to interject. We have a one-bedroom house. If you look at the town records, it's listed as a one-bedroom, and that's why we're adding.
So you're adding two, is that correct? Okay. What, Mr. Diamond, one of the questions I have is about the site plan, and trying to avoid a some discussion later because I noticed that one of the butters and objectors has indicated that the septic system is not shown on a site plan. And I can't find it. So I'm wondering if you can make testimony and/or provide some documentation as to where that septic system is located.
The existing septic system is in the front yard, but it will be designed with the new area in mind. We haven't finished the final design yet. But we're in the process of doing a septic design that would be in total compliance with the site.
Okay, so you have
Can I interject?
No, excuse me, let me finish, ma'am. So you currently have no septic system approval, correct, for this expansion?
Correct.
Or what stage are you at with that?
So that would be.
Has it been designed?
No, so that's me, and I'm working with MJ Doyle on that. And the, the interesting issue with the DEM is that, that, that is, our house falls in a year period between 1989 and 1991. Where these are only on paper, nothing is on PDF, nothing is on the internet. So in order for us to get a copy of the septic site plan, we have to make an appointment to get into the DM's office, look through files, and because of COVID, they're very limited on this, and I cannot make an appointment still. I've been trying for quite some time.
So what exists right now on the property assessed pool?
No, it is a septic.
It is a septic, okay.
It is a septic for a one-bedroom, though, is how it was played out.
Okay. Just to note for the record, the application does require the site plan to show proposed septic area, and the site plan does not show that.
You said, you said required, required for we would need to know that.
Application requires it, yep. If I read the application correctly, it requires site plan for, to include the septic. Existing and proposed wells and septic system is item seven under the site plan requirements.
And I'll, I'll just check with Amy. Is that something that, that we should have as part of the application?
This is, this is Amy, I, legal counsel. I think you can take note that the applicant says they're working on it. So, and, and due to issues with COVID, they've had some trouble getting in to review the DEM records. Whether or not, if, if this is approved, whether or not you make it an explicit condition of approval, that DEM approval for the septic is required, it would, of course, be required. And I would also note this would be a conditional approval for anyone inclined to make a motion. Obviously, if this were an application that required relief tied to the setback, for instance, especially use permit for, you know, a location of an ISDS, then obviously you'd want that information. I think in this case, you can let that slide based on what they've said. And I think you can rely on their testimony.
Certainly, the placement of any of the structure relative to the septic, like asking for relief because the septic is in the way, obviously becomes a difficult argument if we don't know where it's, where it's going to be.
Yes, that's a different story.
So just to pick up on that, Amy, if, if that were the case, that the septic would interfere with the plans that we have in front of us for approval, then they would need to come back with a revised set of plans. Would that be correct?
Yes, yep. And, um, you know, we've, we have our instructions as to what level of detail is required on the site plans, and, and we've all seen site plans with drastically different levels of detail. So I, I, I know it is a requirement, but I don't think it's been strictly enforced all the time in the past.
So go ahead, Mr. Daniels. Do you have more questions for now?
It's all I have right now.
Okay, great. Anyone else on the board have questions for Mr. Diamond?
Yes, I do. This is Mark, Bill Mark.
Go ahead.
Um. Mr. Mark.
So bring us back, back in November, we, we moved forward with the previous plan you had. Is, is the difference on that just a five-foot addition of the garage?
No, Mr. Mark, the plans are the same. The only reason why we're back is because we needed to verify the off-site structures to get our calculation correct. Other than that, the plan is, is the same, including the five-foot extension on the garage.
So the off-site, off-site structure being the shed, or is that it?
The shed, the outside stair, that wasn't taken into account last time, so we wanted to make sure our calculations were correct.
Okay, all right. And was there any, like, as, as Mr. Daniels mentioned, was, was there septic considerations back then that you knew you were going to go through the same motions or not?
Like Christine said, we the septic design was talked about last time. We're still working on it, but like Christine said, based on the obstacles that we've been having trying to get a design, we aren't able to furnish you anything relative to that tonight. But as I said, any design that we do do will be in compliance.
Okay.
And there will certainly be issue to the town with all the engineering that's required.
Right. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rosen.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused on the septic system. The present septic system that's there is in the front yard, is that correct?
Correct.
And where is the leaching field associated with that septic system?
Christine, do you know approximately where that is?
I would assume it's the front yard, but since I can't get a site plan, I can't answer that.
Well, one of the objectors mentioned that he thought that when you put in the new structure, it's going to be over the leaching field. Amy, I don't know, is that permissible?
This is Amy. I can't comment on the DEM regulations for, for septic systems. I don't know what they are, but as was stated earlier, if anything, if, if their site plan conflicts in any way with the regulations, we're going to see the applicant right back here.
Okay. I have one other que, I have one I have one other question with respect to the deck that, that's a new deck in the back, but there is another deck there right now on the present structure, isn't there?
Correct, Mr. Rosen. It's about a 10 by 10 deck, and that will be expanded the same 10-foot depth, but it will be doubled in size, basically.
And that's part of the the percent increase that you've been, that you've introduced tonight, right?
Correct. The, the existing deck is 101 square feet, and the Correct. The, the existing deck is a hundred and one square feet and the new deck is a hundred square feet.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? Okay. So do you do you guys have anyone else that you wish to present in terms of witnesses or testimony? Okay. So is there anyone in the audience, Jessica, and could we remind everyone how they make themselves known?
Sure. So I have Mary Gale Smith, who has raised her hand. So if you're on a computer, hover over the more button and then you'll see the raise hand function. If you're on phone, hit star nine to raise your hand and star six will mute and unmute. So I'm going to allow Mary Gale, who I believe is Mr. Hess, to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'll give you a little story, going to tell you a little story about this property. The short story. It's about two speculators who want to build a small house. And they wanted to build it on a wetlands lot. And they weren't allowed to. Map number ninety-six dash one, lot forty-three, thirty years ago. So they decided they had a solution. Raised the lot, raised the lot surface by pouring a concrete wall. Four feet to eight foot, six inches high. And eight inches wide. And ninety feet long. One on the east side. One on our south side and one on the west or north side. And when the walls were poured, they brought in fill needed to raise the ground level. That's why those walls are there. They filled between those walls until they were approximately five feet above the original. This allowed them about two and a half feet above the original groundwater level, which is the important item here. That was needed so they could install the conventional septic field of two lines and a loop. And that was enough for an ascent for a one-bedroom house. Rhydam approved those plans. They were prepared by Jonathan H. Savage. He worked for VHB Engineers. And that was in October of nineteen ninety. Consequently, a small, single-family, one and a half-story cape, which you see there, of fourteen hundred thirty-one square feet was built. And it was sold right away to James and Mary Miller. Mary Miller was my wife after her first marriage, when her name was Miller, it's now Hess of Amsted, Connecticut. And that was in August thirtieth in nineteen ninety-one. So this is a wetlands lot. And I have the information on the septic system. It's, I can tell you that it is, would be under the new addition. Edition would be built over it. The beginning of the system of the leaching field is approximately eight feet off the present house. It's twenty-one feet by twenty-one feet. And
So
Yes.
So I, I, I guess how is this relevant to, to because if, if other buildings are of equal size to their proposing, how is it those buildings could be built but not this one?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So next door, if you're looking at the house on the right side, there are two houses that are three stories plus they look like that they're, I'm not sure how many bedrooms there are, three or four. So
Two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. They're Ruck systems. They're a different system. You know, what a rock system.
They have to put in a new system and today's systems would might be the Advantix systems. I'm not terribly familiar with the differences, aside from the fact that they can put them in places that they never had been able to safely.
You would not.
So
Yeah, you would not be able to put a Ruck system. I don't believe in this application.
Okay. So, but that's not really the question tonight.
All right, now I'll take it a little further. Does, and we're going to touch back on the septic system. Does the present septic system meet the state standards?
And that's not really in front of us. That's not in front of us tonight, if, if it does or not. Tonight, that's in front of us is, is a dimensional variant, relative.
May I finish?
Of course. Yep.
Thank you. The state requires a SSD application to Rhydam to Rhode Island DEM. By the homeowner, which is tried to do apparently, to apply directly for either that permit, a suitability permit or an alteration permit. At, at which time they can determine whether you can even be able to have a, a building permit. Now, this is a large
But this is, they're asking for a dimensional variance. They're not asking for a building permit.
Well, this is, why are we doing the dimensional variance when we may not, we may be just taking up a lot of everybody's time if you're not able to satisfy DEM? DEM should be, apparently DEM would like the SSD application before you went this far. And
It's not required by, it's not required by our ordinance for them to, to come with us with any DEM. There's no DEM requirements prior to submitting.
But there is site plan number under five under your application that existing and proposed structures to show you the distance from the lot lines, which you did do. Existing proposed parking area, which is not shown, which should be driveways, walkways. Existing and proposed wells and septic systems, which apparently our attorney feels we don't need to do under the application.
So, so you want to know the locations of, of the wells and, and the water source?
And, and yes, when you bring it up, the water line should be shown, present water line and the sewer line.
Well, it's either a water line or a well.
It's a water line.
Okay, so that's not necessary.
On city water.
Our purposes.
But that's
So that, that wouldn't be necessary to, to, for this, for this process.
It would be when you have to locate the driveway.
But not necessarily within, okay, so we can ask them where the driveway is. Okay.
And to go further, I, I'd like to go further with this. This is a wetlands lot. And on the application and the ascent from, from Rhydam, it was noted as to where the wetlands were located in the backyard, as well as the other lots forty-four and forty-five. I live on forty-five. We do have wetlands. We do have restrictions. We do have posted, post that we're not to cut or otherwise use the back of the yard. And lot forty-three also has that requirement.
In the backyard?
In the backyard, that's correct.
So they're going, they're going towards, they're going towards the front yard, though.
But you're asking on the same application, sir, for the deck in the back, which the original deck was not approved by Coastal.
I'm not aware.
Expansion should not be.
So Coastal needs to approve?
You don't have one that can, can check the facts for you or somewhere, a town, either in town building official or planning official that's on the board that has access to the records.
So you're saying the deck, the deck is not part of, was never approved?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll ask that as well, okay? Anything else that, that, that can help us through this?
Well, I'm, I'm sure it's, I'm not sure if it's going to help you, but there's, yes, I would like to go further with it. My letter of January fourteenth, I asked for a request for continuation because of the challenges and some of those are mentioned that you're unable to get to DEM. I'm, I probably don't understand why a copy that DEM could forward of the septic system would be acceptable, but BSMA. I, I am asking for continuation because of the virus, the coronavirus, and because of the fact that we have to use Zoom. And, and some of our butters are elderly or unable to use Zoom, and I have a problem with Zoom. So that request is being made.
Okay. Do you want me to read that letter? Would you like me to read that letter into the record?
Or do you?
Sure.
Yes.
I can do that. All right, I, I can read it if you like. This is on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, for fifty-nine Rosebrier Ave, Wakefield, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-seven-nine. It's addressed to the town of South Kingstown, the zoning board of review. And it says, this is requested dimensional variance for the third-story addition and deck located sixty-nine Rosebrier Ave. Assessors map ninety-six dash one, lot forty-three is the reference. Says, Dear Chairman, I am responding to oppose the construction of a garage, three-story addition and rear deck extension. I reside at fifty-nine Rosebrier Ave, plot, plat ninety-six dash one, lot forty-five. As a property owner of Rawland, plot ninety-four dash twenty-two-twenty and Wetlands Pond, plat ninety-six dash two slash seven-seven. Within seventy-five feet of the opposed, proposed structure, I am opposed to the granting of any variance for any property located in the wetlands and in the flood zone. My comments include a request for continuation due to the challenges caused by the coronavirus and Zoom. Deleting the proposed ten-by-ten deck, expanding the existing deck, deck, previous built by the previous owner in the flood zone without a CRMC consent. The plans do not indicate that the proposed addition is on top of the existing septic leaching field. But propose, provide the location of the new OWTS and show the location of the butters leaching fields. Provide a location of the proposed driveway, parking area and walkway. And the buildable footprint available may have to be reduced due to the existing concrete retaining walls and the location of the OWTS. They provide a copy of the CRMC wetlands deed restrictions of thirty feet from the rear property line. And the existing five-foot-high above-ground concrete retaining walls on the northwest side has been leaning for some time, provide insurance that this wall will remain upright. And this is very truly yours, Bert Hess. So, Mr. Hess, that being read in there, is there anything you wanted to add that? Because we can certainly ask the questions that you played out.
Yeah, provide us also for stormwater. How is stormwater going to be directed? There's a health concern, how you handle a septic that system, a leaching field, that it's going to have to be removed if this petition is approved.
And I'm sorry, and, and what do you mean? I mean, in terms of the protocols.
Hazardous waste, a septic, a human septic system is hazardous waste.
That's not really under our purview. That's, that's not really
When you're
To deal with that.
It is when you're approving an addition that is over a septic system, sir.
Not, no, I'm not really sure that, that, that are okay, but you, you can go ahead.
Okay. Also, I'd like to make sure that we read into the record my letter of November twenty-third of twenty twenty.
November twenty-third. Jessica, do you have that? November eleventh, okay, hang on.
Well, you can read that one in, if you have the eleventh, please.
You give me one second, Mr. Cagnetta, I can bring them up.
Okay, so I can read in the November eleventh one. Again, same subject to the town of South Kingstown. Says, Dear Mr. Chairman, I'm responding to oppose the construction of a garage, three-story addition and rear deck extension. I reside at the fifty-nine Rosebrier Ave, plot ninety-six-one dot lot forty-five. It's a property owner of Rawland, plot forty dash four twenty-twenty and a wetland pond, plat ninety-six dash two slash seventy-seven with a hundred feet in the post structure. I'm opposed to the granting of any variance for the properties located in the wetlands or in, and or flood zone. The challenges caused by the coronavirus should add a one-year delay to this application. Requested dimensional variant could significantly alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area. The new addition will cover the entire existing one-bedroom septic leaching field. The DEM OWTS information has not been included by the engineer or the owner. The location of the proposed driveway, parking area and walkway are not shown. The buildable area available may be reduced from fifty feet by a hundred and fifty feet, seventy-five hundred square feet to forty-six by a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty due to the existing concrete retaining walls and coastal resources management wetlands deed restriction of thirty feet from the rear property line. One of the existing onsite five-foot concrete retaining walls has been compromised. I appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Bert Hess. Okay, Mr. Hess, it sounds like between those two, your concerns had changed a bit about the retaining wall from being compromised to, to wanting assurance that it will remain upright.
I believe that a bond should be carried for demolition or replacement. And if you are standing at the street looking at their home, the left side of the structure is starting to settle in the same side as the wall. And I, that bond should also cover any
We, we cannot authorize, we cannot force anyone to get a bond.
All right, I want to go one step further here, if you may, if I may. I've been clues, requested the building plans before, which I received from the town. And I had requested information on the septic and the at this point, the answer was this is all that's been submitted with the zoning application. And, and they, you know, went on to say that they would get a building permit. But in the meantime, I believe that the building official has available the application, SSD application, that the application should be made and filled in and, and sent in before you go ahead with this addition. And I thank
For, before a building permit is issued, I'm sure they're going to need to have the, the, at that the onsite wastewater treatment plan through DEM and so forth. I mean, that's, that could be under a requirement of the approval.
That is a requirement. You're not going to build with your, or disposed waste. That is a requirement, you're not gonna build with your, or disposed waste on your, on your own.
Correct.
Parcel without it. And at this point. What's there now has to be determined whether you can go ahead.
That is not for us to determine, but yes, I'm sure that has to be done.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, just, if you have any more questions, I'm sorry.
Did we read in November twenty third letter?
We didn't, did Jessica, did you find?
I do not have. I do not have a letter from November twenty third. I have a letter, um.
January twentieth one, I haven't read.
Yep, I also have one from December eighth and December twelfth. But I go from the November one to the December eighth and the December twelfth letters.
And they, they seem to have all similar concerns, correct? Is there, is there new evidence? But it's, it's the similar, yep.
I think the biggest concern is that wanna make it part of the record is that we are dealing with a wetlands lot. A wetlands parcel, it cannot change. It was wetlands thirty years ago. It's even wetter today, unfortunately. And I'm.
There a lot is wetter or the, there a lot is wetter or the surrounding area?
Yes, it's well, all three, the whole area is wetter. I have lived in all three of those houses and, and sixty nine Rosebrier. Sixty three Rosebrier and fifty nine Rosebrier, which I now currently reside. And have been involved with the surveys. And I'm sure that the survey is available, the assents are available. The coastal records are available and they should be part of this application.
They did mention that they were, they're out there, it's just a matter of retrieving them.
Please retrieve them before you act on this.
Okay, so we'll, we'll ask the questions that you've raised of the applicants and, and, and see. What they have for an answer. So, and then after, you can ask more questions if, after that, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So let's ask some of these questions. So. Do you guys know any of this history that's talked about in terms of easements? Or other things that are associated to the property in terms of the changes over the years?
Um, I, I'm not sure, I would say, I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to raise my hand or if I'm doing it properly, but.
Yep, you're doing it right.
Okay, so I just wanna say that we have heard bits and pieces of the story and, you know, Bert's. Wife lived in this home, et cetera, et cetera. While, while we appreciate his concern for our property. He is not a but our property, so I'm not really sure what the real concern is. Both our neighbors on the north and south called in in November and both in support of this project, which hasn't changed. I don't know that they'll be able to call, I know one neighbor cannot call in tonight, they had a death in the family. But they were both in favor and Bert is not, Mr. Hess is not our neighbor. He lives two houses down. He has a beautiful three story home. It's closer to the wetlands than either of the houses north of him. Which is the, another three story house and then sixty nine. I would say that we've done our due diligence. We have an architect, we have been working with MJ Doyle, who is an engineer. She'll be doing our septic. We are working with a structural engineer to make sure that the retaining walls are safe, obviously. We don't wanna live in a home that isn't safe and sound. This is our home that we wanna live in forever. We're doing everything following all town protocols and building rules that you guys have set in place. And COVID has already caused us a huge delay. We expected to start this project with six months ago. And because of the delays, just getting permits together and, and working with architects because of COVID. We don't wanna be delayed further because of that. We do appreciate his concern. It sounds like he's really concerned about our safety. For some reason, and that's really nice, but I think that we're working with people who have no engineering degree. That's why we're working with them.
So you're not familiar with any easements or restrictions on the property in terms of existing wetlands identified?
Oh, I do.
There's nothing.
We have spoken to the biologists, the wetland biologists.
Yep.
Things are shed, you know, it can't be moved back towards the wetlands. The whole reason that when we started working with Ed Diamond, we chose to go forward. I think I said this in the last meeting was because of the wetlands. We didn't wanna do anything that would go backward toward the wetlands. I have been a national park ranger for a very long time, and this is important to us. We're very environmentally conscious. And we're doing everything that we can to have an environmentally conscious property, including the above ground septic, when we're able to get that permit.
So then tell me about, a bit about the, the location of both egress for driveways. And, and septic, is there any preliminary concerns within your design? That these things won't work? Mr. Diamond, is there, is there any concerns that there's, there's, is, is, or location's gonna, expected to change in terms of the driveway? Or is that staying the same?
I would anticipate that it would stay the same if, for whatever reason, the site engineer says that the septic won't work. Relative to our design, then we would certainly redesign to accommodate the septic. To make sure that it's properly engineered and it's laid out safely and properly.
Cause if we look at, just looking at the property, some of the topography that Mr. Hess was mentioning. Is, is kinda unique, you know, you have two sidewalls, retaining walls. And then, then there's one in the front, which I believe. Was that a, a timber structure?
It's for the, it's for the existing parking space in the front.
So behind that timber structure is not the septic, or is that the septic behind that timber structure?
Yeah, yes, east of it is, yes, the eastern portion towards the house is septic on the north side of the lot.
Right, so the expectation with the new system is to go relatively within the same location?
And we're, that's why we'd only do the one car garage, it would be on the south side of the lot, so that the north side of the.
Okay, and so there, there's not much of a concern of fitting both. You know, so keeping your driveway essentially identified within those railroad ties. That's basically gonna stay the same in terms of location.
We would.
It's not gonna switch you on the side of the property, on the street, anything like that.
And, and right now, there is not a semi-permeable driveway. We would make sure that it was done within environmental codes, semi-permeable, whatever it needed to be.
And in terms of rainwater management, is there, is there a design expectation or, or regulations? That you're expecting to follow within water management?
We, we rely on the site engineer to help us, guide us through that.
Okay. Because I'm sure Mr. Gorman will have his expectations as to the, the drainage plan for the property. From the engineer?
Yes.
That's correct, Chairman. Yeah, they'll be required to submit a soil erosion permit. And the design calculations for all the stormwater management. Prior to issuance of building permit.
And do we have to identify in a decision potentially to say that the driveway is staying in its position? Is that, is that gonna trigger anything for building if that is changed, the locations change?
The location of the driveway?
Yeah.
I think that, that'll be part of the soil erosion permit, but I think that's something the engineer, as well as the, you know. The septic designer will have to see how that's gonna work out as well.
But obviously, if we say, is there an expectation for a certain amount of onsite parking for this area? Do we have to, are they required to have two spaces or something like that?
Two spaces are required. One of them can be the, inside the, the garage.
Okay, so they can essentially reduce their driveway footprint in terms of the parking? Because they're putting it inside the house?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other board members have, have more questions for, relative to what we heard from Mr. Hess?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Tom Daniels, Mr. Diamond, does any of the existing structures fall within the wetland setback? As required?
I can't say yes or no to that, cause I know most of the wetlands are in the back of the property.
Yes.
But we're under the assumption that because we're doing this addition in the front, that I don't know the definite answer to that.
So.
Can answer that based on my conversation with the biologist at the.
Okay, go ahead.
That, no, it is not going to be intrusive on the wetlands at all, and that was the reason for going forward instead of back.
So, do you know what, do you know what, where the wetlands are delineated? Because they're not shown on your site plan. In other words, you're showing thirty feet to your property line. But where are the wetlands in relation to that?
My understanding, and, and don't quote me, but my understanding from talking to her was that behind our shed. We have fifteen feet back from the shed before the wetlands begin.
Okay, so you are outside of fifty feet. Is that your testimony?
No, fifteen feet behind the shed, one five.
Fifteen feet from the, from where the wetlands begin?
Behind our shed. Yeah, it's on, that is on our site plan.
So, so, so what is, I guess the question then is for the building official, what is the, what is the setback from, from the, from what? Where the wetlands are delineated to a structure in the town of South Kingston?
So I think that would be, I'm not certainly on the exact dimension, but I believe from freshwater wetlands. It would be fifty feet. But I, you know, I think that would.
I think it's fifty feet too. I mean, so that, that shed is not in compliance as it stands.
That's right.
Wouldn't seem to me, but.
Yeah, so, and so my husband's saying right now, there's like a zone in between, a buffer zone. For the wetlands begin, and that's where the fifteen has to be from our shed. I'm sure our house is fifty feet from the buffer zone before the wetlands ends.
Well, I guess that's the question I'm, the answer I'm looking for, I don't, I don't see any delineation. And we heard extensive testimony from the, from the objector that, that you're in the wetlands. So I'm just trying to clarify that for my own sake.
According to the biologist that I spoke with, the woman at the DEM, when we called her. Two years ago requesting a perm, talking about a new shed, which we're not doing, we're actually going to remove the shed. But when I called her two years ago, she told us, as long as we moved the shed to the center of the property. And we were fifteen feet from either side and fifteen feet from the buffer zone, it was fine. And that our neighbors to the south of us, including Mr. Hess, are much closer to the wetlands than we are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other folks on the board have questions for, related to Mr. Hess's? Questions or concerns?
I have a question. Um, this is a general question, I'm just curious to know how many more regulatory hurdles. You know, these folks have to face here, and I'm just trying to get at what other opportunities Mr. Hess might have to raise. Some of the objections that aren't before us today. I don't know, if, if, Mr. and Mrs. Necktenis, if you, do you have any sense of how many more regulatory approvals you'll need for this project?
My understanding is that we need to get the septic plan approved by the DEM, once I can get a paper copy of the plan. And that we have a structural engineer checked the property, but other than that, I, I believe that was it, before we could get building permits.
Thank you.
If, if we were approved of variance.
Right. That's all I had.
Okay. Okay, uh, trying to think of some of the other concerns, but I feel like that, that has addressed. Some, is there anyone else out there in the audience that, that wishes to? Speak up on the application? Is that a yes, Jessica?
Yes, it is, my dogs are barking. I have Rich R, who has his hand raised, and Mr. Hess has his hand raised again. But Rich R was first on it, so I'm gonna allow him to speak now.
Please.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name and spell it?
Richard Rita, R E D A.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry, could you, you swear to tell the whole truth enough, but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I was on the call in the fall, and if you're looking at Peter and Christine's house from the street. I would be the house directly to the left. And I don't know any of the other issues that you were talking about, but the, the retaining wall was brought up and. I will be the one that would be the primary effector, and I am very comfortable. Peter and Christine are amazing neighbors. I am, my concern is not if something were to go wrong, which I don't think it would. I know they would take care of it, and before they build, they would make sure everything is strong and stable, so. It does affect me, and it was brought up, that's the reason I wanted to comment. But they're very good, and trust that they would do the right thing, but I don't think anything would happen, but if they did, I, I have a hundred percent faith in them.
Thank you, and before you leave, just make sure that any board members have any questions for, for Rich? Nope, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you.
And Mr. Hess, you had some more comments?
I can clarify the shed for you. The shed is moved by the previous owner. Marie Duncan, who's deceased. And that shed was much closer to the house, was very close to the house. As she moved it into the wetlands, it does not belong in the location it is in now. And the wetlands as per the DEM. In nineteen ninety, the wetlands were shown as ten foot off the back of the house. The restrict. The restriction of time that we own the house was that you could not use the backyard, period.
Okay. Well, I think.
Wetlands.
Certainly make.
The wetlands are, are as, by DEM, the wetlands are ten foot off the back of the house.
Do you have?
I own in the back of the house is totally wetlands. And the, my house is, is not closer to the wetlands. Than lot forty three. But, but wetlands on my property.
Right, well, I think.
And that shed reflects it on my, my house, the shed is up close to the house for that very reason. And the same next door, on forty four.
Well, we, we have to unfortunately rely on an engineer to provide us those, those locations of a wetland.
DEM to provide it.
Well, an engineer could also provide that, and, and, and that is their expectation, and we can certainly set requirements. That, that any construction doesn't happen within a certain distance from a, a identified wetland. And nor could they, so, and, and Mr. Gorman, just to make, make sure. If they wanted to build that deck and back, if for some reason that the house was identified within the fifty feet, would that trigger anything? Even if we approved it, or, or would it still be able to happen?
If they made proper application to DEM and it was approved, if it was located within the, the fifty foot, that's something that could be approved by DEM, or if they wish they could perhaps not include that in their building permit.
Okay, so it wouldn't be something you would be allowed to do, or you wouldn't be allowed to let them do it? If DEM said it was within that fifty feet?
They would have to make application to DEM if they wanted to move forward with the construction of it, if it was located within their jurisdiction.
Okay. So if DEM said no, it wouldn't like they can, they can come to you and ask and pretend that DEM didn't say no?
We would be looking for their approval prior to issue in the building permit.
Okay, great. So approval by DEM to say that everything that is intended to happen in terms of septic building, everything is within DEM's expectations, basically.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do you, any, any more questions for, for anyone that's come forward so far? No? Okay, Jessica, is there anyone else that wishes to bark?
No, there's no one else present. Thank you.
Okay, great. So can we have a motion? Or do you guys want to add anything to your application before? Because we might close this and, and. So do I need a motion to close the public comment at this point?
No.
Okay, so let's close the public comment and have a go around of how folks are feeling about this. Mr. Mark, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm okay with it. I don't, you know, I don't think we're, we're here to decide any issues beyond what we're, what's before us in terms of dimensional variances. I think the four and a half percent is, is not asking a lot in this case. So I don't have any problem with it.
Sure. How about, how about you, Mr. Rosen?
Just one quick clarification from Amy.
Go ahead. This is Amy.
Okay. When Tom Daniels asked you a question, you mentioned something about possibly having to come back or something like that.
Oh, yeah, that, that was, yeah, if, if this application is approved, they go to DEM and they find that for whatever reason, the, the plans conflict with DEM regs, they're going to have to come back here and get an amended approval or redesign, or see if there's any way they can do what they want to do on the property without zoning board approval. That's just letting us all know, reminding us what we all know. DEM regs apply separate and apart from the zoning ordinance provisions. And DEM has ultimate say on what's within their domain, which is the wetlands and the setbacks.
Okay, having heard that, I, I, again, I can agree with Bill, Mark. I think this should go forward. As Amy said, if there are problems with the EM, they're going to have to come back to us anyhow, so. I, I'm have no problem with this approval, with, with, and approvals, sorry.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Daniels, how are you feeling about that?
I certainly think the site plan could have included more detail, would have made our lives a little easier on this matter. But I, I don't intend to oppose it.
Mr. Charque.
I concur.
Awesome, okay. I, I, yeah, I, I, I agree with the reason of it by, by Mr. Mark. And I sort of appreciate the questions of Mr. Daniels. I, I think that it's, it's definitely thoughtful and, and knowing that there could be some details that have to be worked out via the site plan and some of the engineering in terms of wetland locations. But I, you know, after viewing the site and the adjacent buildings, there is quite the variety of sizes and distances from the street all throughout the neighborhood. So I can't really say this would necessarily be out of character. So I don't necessarily have a problem either. So would someone out there, well, one of the board members rather, like to make a motion? Remember the other?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, I, we, we are, we're here to decide for dimensional variance under section two oh seven for the non-conforming lot, section four oh one for dimensional and nine oh seven for the standards of relief. Ultimately, what we're, we're being asked is to approve a four and a half percent increase over the twenty percent. That's standard in, in this case for this lot size. And although we're all facing a lot of burdens at these times, and I think the neck tenesses have proven that they're facing, you know, just getting through DEM and other agencies is no easy task. I don't think it's our job to impose a wish list of action items that is not under our purview. The owners have had a team of professionals to address any possible issues. And naturally, they're bound by the laws and regulations issued by the state and, and the town. So with, with that, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the petition of Peter and Christine Necktenis of Fairfield, Connecticut for a dimensional variance as read into the record by the chairman. The owners, Christine and Peter and a tennis spoke on their own behalf, as well as the architects Vincent Babic and Ed Diamond. In support, we heard from Rich Rita, immediate neighbor to the north. And in opposition, we heard from Mr. Bert Hess. For items entered into the record, we received architectural plans and a survey. We, we were not given a, a septic plan, but obviously it's forthcoming. And that's again, under the purview of the DEM. So I'd like to say that the, the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure, and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it's not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant, expecting those physical disabilities addressed. Because in this case, the addition is in the front of the property. It's, you know, it's away from the wetlands. And they've, they've done their best to, you know, conform with the regulations and be cognizant of the wetlands. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily in the, from the designer of the applicant to realize greater financial gains. Because as the Necktenis has said, they would, like, it's their home. They want to move in there. You know, they want to live there full time. It's, no one's going to try to build something that's unsafe for themselves. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance, ordinance is based. Because in looking at the, the area, you know, what, what they're proposing to build is, is consistent with what we see in that neighborhood and as given in testimony. The houses to the south are generally in the, in the range of three stories and are somewhere from three to four bedrooms as is. The, the board finds that the relief granted is the least relief necessary. Because four and a half percent and an increase from a one bedroom septic to a possible three bedroom, it's not a stretch. We're not, you know, quadrupling the size of the building or lot. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the met dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. And again, you know, what they've had to go through to date and this with COVID and the processes that are taking months and months that used to take a much shorter period of time. It goes without saying, you know, it's, it's a struggle. And, you know, we're not here to, again, deem items that are not under our purview and how to go about it, but that's the DEM and other agencies. So with that, I vote to approve.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mark. Is there a second?
Second, go ahead.
Second by Mr. Charque. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Jessica.
Um, I believe it should be a conditional approval if you want to check with Amy on that.
Yes, thank you, Jess. I, I, this is Amy. I did mention that because DEM approval is required. On the expiration date will be two years rather than one year from recording. I believe the references section, is it nine oh eight or nine ten? Just Jess and I will clean that up in the written decision, but you can amend the motion as such, please.
Mr. Mark?
So I am amending, amending my motion to, I'm sorry, what was that again, Amy? To, for the, the.
That the, that the expiration date for this approval will be two years from recording versus the standard one.
Okay, so I made my decision to say that the expiration date for this is, from recording will be two years as opposed to the one year.
Great. Does that sound okay, Mr. Charque?
Second.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Charque.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
And. Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Kagneta, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, we have the petition of Rhode Island Care Concepts Incorporated, care of David L. Johnson of Fifteenth Circle Street East Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine one five, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to establish a marijuana retail facility, which is a compassion center. The state is in the process of expanding state licensed retail compassion centers. In anticipation of that expansion, applicants must receive local approval for the establishment of the facility as part of their application to the State Department of Business Regulation. The lot size is two point two seven acres. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section three zero one, Schedule of Use Regulations Table, Sections five, zero four point one five, which is the marijuana related uses, and Section ninety, zero seven, which is our standards of relief. The owner is RSP Realty LLC for premises located at seven one one Kingstown Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Sessions map fifty-seven dash two, lot seventy-six, and is zone CH Commercial Highway. The use code is one hundred marijuana related, sorry, marijuana retail facility. And with this petition, we did get a number of submissions, submittals. So we do have their application dated December fourth, and the owner authorization form notarized and dated June thirtieth. There are a, a number of submissions and plans, which I'm sure we'll go through a number of them tonight. I will abbreviate them a little bit by just saying the Site Development Plan C one as prepared by SFM Associates and is stamped by Scott F. Morehead dated September, July eighth and July, September tenth. Existing Conditions Plan, prepared by Situate Surveys and stamped by Angelo Remandi dated June fifteenth, and a grading, grading and drainage plan, prepared by Situate Surveys Inc., and stamped by Angelo Remandi PLS dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Site Drainage Plan, prepared by SFM Associates and stamped by Morehead dated June fifteenth. Site Construction Details provided by SFM and stamped by Morehead, June fifteenth. And then Erosion Control Details, prepared by Holly Beckman and stamped by Morehead, June fifteenth. Landscape Plan, prepared by SFM and stamped by Kurt Van Dexter, RIA, dated June twenty-fourth and July sixteenth. Construction Plans Progress Print, A one, A, A one one, A two zero, A two one. Did May eighteenth, Lighting Plan and Technical Specifications, sixteen pages by RAB dated July first, Lighting Plan with Technical Specs, provided, prepared by RAB. Corrected Development Plan Advisor to Zoning dated September tenth, the Rhode Island Care Concepts, Inc. Security Memorandum dated September first. Storm Water Analysis of Twenty Pages by SFM and Scott Morehead, June twenty twenty. Watershed Plan by SFM and stamped by Morehead, June sixteenth. Operation and Maintenance Plan, three pages from SFM and stamped by Morehead dated June twenty twenty. Sewer Service Engineering Review Record dated June twenty second. And Suez Water Letter dated June fourth, Union Fire District dated July thirteenth. Written Narrative and Support, thirteen pages, provided by Natural Resources Services, Inc. Scott P. Rabidau, PWS, dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Thousand-foot Radius and a Butter's List, prepared by Situate Surveys and stamped by Angelo Remandi, Remandi, excuse me, dated September seventeenth, a thousand-foot zoning map, prepared by Situate Surveys and stamped by Angela Remody. That one is fifteen pages. And then General Contact Information, Taxpayer Information, and Affirmation Signed and Dated December fourth. Our legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailings, DBR application, which is a redacted copy of five hundred and thirteen pages. Supplemental Report of Sixteen Pages, received January fifteenth. So that is everything that was submitted, I believe, and if not, we'll hear that there was some more. So who is here tonight for this application?
Good evening, David Johnston, attorney licensed in Rhode Island at two three six three Post Route. I'm also the president of Rhode Island Care Concepts, the applicant.
Okay, so are you acting as the lawyer for it or?
I, I am this evening, yes.
A, a, as the lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So are you going to have anyone else start the conversation, or you just want to get right into it?
I'll just get right into it, if that's okay. Do a brief intro, introduce my attendees and take it from there.
Sure.
So again, good evening, David Johnston, with Rhode Island Care Concepts, a Rhode Island non-for-profit corporation, seeking a special use permit for a compassion center at seven eleven Kingstown Road. That's the Clark's Farms location in Wakefield. Again, it's in this commercial highway CH zoning district where it is allowed by a special use permit. Before I get into the specifics, if it's okay, like to give a brief summary of where we are regarding state licensure. So we can see, so we all understand, I guess, the broader picture as far as how it will work for state licensing and how that dovetails with the town approval. We applied to the Department of Business Regulations, all applications for a compassion center were due to the state by December fifteenth. That application period is now closed. DBR requires proof of compliance with local zoning laws by way of a letter from the zoning official or a final application submitted to the zoning official to the zoning board, excuse me, for those, those final approvals, which in this case would be a special use permit. Right now, we're waiting for DBR to approve all of the applications. Once all the applications are approved, they will be put into a lottery for the geographic zone in which the applications sit. The lottery will be drawn at random. One applicant per zone. The lottery will be drawn at random. One applicant per zone will be awarded a license for a compassion center. South Kingston is in zone five. That's Charleston, Exeter, Hivington, Narragansett, Richmond and Westerly. In addition to South Kingston. There are ten applicants in zone five to DBR, four of which are in South Kingston, including ourselves. The remaining six are in the other municipalities. In zone five, so. At the end of the day, there is more or less a four in ten chance that one of these will be cited in South Kingston based on the applications. Presented to DBR and a one in ten chance for for us as Rhode Island Care Concepts. If there's any other questions there as far as state licensing and how that dovetails, I'm happy to handle that now or it can just continue if you prefer.
No, I think everybody's content for you to keep going.
Thank you. So with me this evening, I have Edward Pramental, our land use expert and Paul Bannon, our traffic expert. I'll ask them to testify. Shortly, I also have here with me Scott Morehead, our project engineer, Hallie Beckman, our landscape architect and Sean Crowley. Our security consultant and expert. They will be here to answer any questions that the board may have, provide more information. As as needed. I'd like to start with just a brief project overview as brief as I can make it. Regarding what we're what we're planning, what we're proposing. So this will be a new construction. And a new site layout tailored for the use of a compassion center. We will be reducing the amount of impervious area quite substantially on the site, revegetating a portion of the current. Current site that's currently impervious or is currently pervy, excuse me, currently impervious. And accounting for stormwater drainage and runoff mitigation for the areas that will remain impervious. The building itself will be roughly thirty one hundred square feet. This will be a retail only facility, no cultivation, simply sales to medical marijuana patients. The project does not require any relief from the zoning ordinance. Does not require any waivers from the planning or subdivision regulations of the town as well. Access to the site is a one-way traffic flow. It enters from the Westerly driveway. Off of Kingston Road exits southerly to the Driftway and ultimately back to the signalized intersection onto Kingston Road. Mr. Bannon, who will testify shortly, did a traffic analysis. The conclusion of which is that the site will have a negligible impact on the overall traffic and the safety. Of the servicing roadways as well as abutting parcels and subject parcel. For parking, we have forty five total spaces, thirty five of those spaces are paved, ten are on grass pavers. We're anticipating a maximum of twenty customer vehicles plus five to ten staff vehicles. And that maximum isn't, we don't anticipate that twenty vehicle count to be a regular occurrence. We anticipate that. Grand opening, special events, things like that, certainly not a weekly or even a monthly basis. Our data shows us our typical customer flow will be between five to ten vehicles and five that customer vehicles, five to ten. Staff vehicles. We allow for extra parking for the number of spaces. Based on our conversations and our meetings with Lieutenant Healy of the South Kingston Police Department. His primary concern was for overflow parking, that we had adequate overflow parking in the event that we had. More people there than than we anticipated. He wanted to make sure we could, we could handle those vehicles on site. So we went up to the forty five spaces. Technical review committee, there was some concern about basically there being too much pavement. We didn't want everything paved. Where it might not be necessary. So we discussed it. We thought a good. Kind of compromise, if you will, or middle ground was to include ten of those as grass pavers that will kind of fit into the landscaping. And have a more aesthetic appeal to them than just a paved parking lot. I'll touch on the lighting plan. Again, two lighting plans were submitted, one for store hours and one for after hours. The store will be open until eight o'clock PM, eight AM to eight PM are the the maximum, the only allowable hours for it to be opened by code. So we'll be closed by eight PM during the winter months when it's dark. There will be lighting on the daylight or excuse me, business hour lighting plan sufficient to light the parking areas, the driveways. Entry and exits as well as around the buildings and pedestrian areas. Excuse me, for pedestrian vehicular safety. In the evenings, certain lights will be dimmed, others will be turned off. To mitigate that light spill over into adjacent properties. The building itself will remain adequately lit for security to deter theft and deter vandalism. Things of that nature. Both of these lighting plans were designed, excuse me, with. Dark sky compliant and 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 with an eye towards mitigating light spill over. Onto abutting properties. We have a security and safety plan, which we promulgated pursuant to the DBR regulations. As well as pursuant to the industry standards and best practices, excuse me, just. Part of those best practices is not to disclose the entire security and safety plan. So I did submit a memorandum which highlights some of the. Major points of the security. Plan we have in place, which I'll touch on briefly. Video surveillance will be used on the interior and the exterior. There'll be high resolution, high speed cameras which work in both. Low. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Which work in both low light and normal lighting situations. Angled so that they can see and read faces, vehicles, license plates, things of that nature. These, those will be integrated with the central alarm system, a digital alarm system. The alarms will be obviously motion detectors, things of that nature. As well as impact sensors on the doors and exterior walls and windows. Which will alert central, central alarm company, the alarm vendor. As well as security staff, security personnel, as well as first responders, the SK Police Department and. Excuse me, and DDR. Access to the site will be granted to staff by key card and and key code access only. To restricted areas, so not all personnel who work there can enter all areas of the building. They'll be restricted based upon their roles in the building. While the property is out, while the the. Site is open, a security team of three to five people will be on site during operations. They monitor the admittance of patients, security cameras, the alarm system. As well as maintenance. Routine inspections of the security system include daily, weekly and monthly inspections and audits. Such as keeping the exterior clear of potential obstructions for different camera angles, weekly tests of the alarm notification system, ensuring functionality. For the backup power system. So in the event of a power outage, the security system remains active. Testing all the locks, entrance ways and testing of the emergency alert system. So that's that alert system which alerts staff members as well as the alarm vendors. In addition, there'll be a month, there's a monthly security audit held at the Board of Directors. There'll be a report by the security personnel. Regarding any potential issues with the security, any operational or or technical issues there may be and and. Potential updates that may be required. Operationally, this will be a compassion center. It will be for the, again, the sale, retail sale only. Deliveries will be made from cultivators and vendors to the secure entry on the south of the building. They will be. Vans, SUVs, delivery vans, things of that nature, which are equipped pursuant to DBR's regulations with GPS safes, things of that nature. They enter the secure area or skewed into the building. Everything is stored in the vault. It is then scanned and the skew will be then scanned again once it's sold to the cardholder. With records of when it came in, when it was sold, who it was sold to. Et cetera. I just want to highlight here that this is a sale of prepackaged goods only. There'll be no cultivation, packaging, manufacturing of any product. Which might give rise to odors, things of that nature. The goal here is to mitigate. This is a retail. The goal here is to mitigate any any potential odors or anything that might affect, you know, butter. So we don't anticipate any issues with odors, things of that nature. When that's when the property is closed. When the store is closed, all cannabis products are to be in the vault. The vault has specific security requirements above and beyond what the facility does as. As far as automatic locking doors, surveillance, key cards in, punch pads in and out, things of that nature. So that's the operational. I'd like to quickly point out the a thousand foot radius map that in list of the butters that was included. Which pursuant to the code, section five oh four. Shows that they are, there are no schools within the one thousand foot radius map. Additionally, the butters list was included. To to show and illustrate that there are no private schools. Or home schools at any of those locations. As compared to Rhode Island Department of Education's website. There are also no nursery schools or daycare facilities in that. In that area. So that is a brief synopsis of and summary of what our project is. I'd like to quickly turn it over to. Mr. Pramental, who's our land use expert, so that he may testify. As to the conformance with the comprehensive plan. So I'd ask that he be, Mr. Prametal is here to my right. I'll put my mask back on. Ask that he be sworn in and qualified as an expert.
Great, Mr. Prametal, do you please state your name for the record?
That's Edward, that's Edward Prametal. That's P as in Paul, I M E N T E L.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, excellent. And you've been in front of this board before?
I have on a number of occasions.
And and we've recognized you as an expert previously.
Land use planning and zoning.
Okay, great. So we shall recognize you as such again. So please go ahead.
Thank you. So Mr. Prametal prepared the report, a land use analysis report on behalf of the application. And I just asked him to summarize that now and. So I know very well, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, you've had my report. I know you've reviewed it thoroughly. So what I'll do is. I'll just highlight the key points to build a foundation. That I need to then address the requisite standards for the granting of a special use permit. There are two specific set of standards. There are those specifically related to the use in question. And then there are general standards that are required by any use that's otherwise permitted by a special use permit. So we have been before the planning board. We've already successfully achieved. Attaining the development plan review. This is literally a raise and rebuilds of this entire site. So we were able to. Address not only of the requisite regulatory standards, but we were also able to address all of the requisite design standards, which is always key. Wakefield is always working towards reestablishing the village concept and we were able to do that. And I think they were very pleased with our redesign to that end. I thoroughly reviewed your comprehensive plan, the zoning regulations. I did a thorough analysis of the surrounding neighborhood. To make sure once again, from the standard of the special use permit, that we maintain that consistency with the character of the neighborhood. So, Mr. Chairman, as you actually stated in your opening remarks, when you were going through the exhibits. This particular land use is only permitted by special use in two particular zones. And that would be the commercial highway, the CH and the very limited. West Kingston Industrial District of which is very, very few properties. I I put in and I cut in the image of your zoning map for a very specific reason. To show how limited sites there are that would accommodate this particular land use. If you do the calculations, there's actually literally only a half of one percent of the entire town that's zoned in appropriate manner. And as council has indicated, when you start to weed out the sites. That that would be too close to a respective land, dissimilar land use, which the regulations don't allow. Because the, our intent clearly was to seek purely the special use permit and to be fully dimensionally compliant, which we are. So when you start to weave those sites out, the sites become very few and limited, primarily concentrated in the downtown Wakefield core. And this site is perhaps by far one of the most perfect sites because not only does it fit within all that parameters, but it's also not so visible. So it's screened by other. Commercial operation and it's well situated and well buffered. The commercial highway, the purpose of the commercial highway is to permit and encourage revitalization. And intensification so that the areas within this district that use to their peak potential. Once again, I keep, I think the key points here was not only intensify, but was to revitalize. And that's really what's being pursued. Via the development plan review and our intent as a total raise and rebuild. To that end. We were very accommodating in that we didn't want to backpedal from the current condition of the property. As council has stated, right now, there's quite a considerable amount of impervious surface, quite a considerable amount of building coverage. And we're cutting that back considerably, redesigning the place, re-landscaping the property and bringing it more so to a kind of a green environment. And we have our landscape architect and as well who prepare that plan. The intent here was that we are going to. Have approximately total building coverage on the site, which is over two acres, is only a three point one percent of the site. That's how much we've cut this back to further reduce the impervious coverage. As council stated, a number of these parking spaces are going to be pavers, green pavers. A, not only to make it green, but to address drainage. I did a thorough analysis of your comprehensive plan. I'm not going to bore the board with reading every quote, every goal, every objective that I believe we meet. So let me get into the heart of addressing the standards now for the granting of the special use permit. So the first set of standards are specifically tailored just to. The use in question, the marijuana retail facility. I think it's kind of a misnomer, that name retail facility, because it's really only caters to. Those for medicinal purposes of medical marijuana card, but that is how this land use is categorized. So the first one, the first series of standards are, we have to be distance and appropriate distance for dissimilar land uses. As council has indicated, we do, we did do that analysis. We are not situated within proximity to any of these uses. Our intent once again was to realize full dimensional compliance. The hours of operation are going to be compliant pursuant to your regulations. Council has already spoken to the security protocols that are required. We've already achieved the development plan review. We've addressed all of those requisite standards. And they're carried over into the SUP. But once again, we've achieved the development plan review. Getting into the more general standards for the granting of a special use permit. And the first is that the special use is specifically authorized. It is pursuant to section three oh one, schedule of use regulations. Subsection one hundred marijuana retail. Once again, it's permitted solely by special use in the very limited CH. And the Western Industrial, there's all, and by the way, for my analysis, it was only a limited number of properties in the downtown Wakefield that were really the most appropriate. Number two. That the use sets forth the subsection of the ordinance. So I went through to see if there are any specific standards. And really what was seek was, what wasn't. The main objective here was to realize full dimensional compliance with all of the regulations. And that's once again why we engage in a raise and rebuild of the site. To eliminate any pre-existing setback issues, coverage issues, parking issues, et cetera. Finally, is all the design requirements. The first one is ingress and egress to the site. The site has been appropriately designed, taking full advantage of the existing roadway network. Mr. Bannon will speak more so to that, but the point is it has been designed in a safe vehicular manner. For both to accommodate vehicles and the pedestrians exiting the parking area and entering the facility. Number two, off-street parking, loading. We've met all of the standards. This is not the type of operation. In a heavy commercial area where you'd be concerned, like from performance standards perspective. It doesn't realize odor or glare or not noise or vibration. That it's just not the model of this type of operation. So we've addressed all those nuisance concerns, potential nuisance concerns, which may be realized from all the types of uses that would otherwise be permitted in the CH district. Number three, we have provided appropriate trash, storage, delivery accommodations. Once again, council has already spoken to that. We do have public water and sewer. We're going to be connecting accordingly. By redesigning, raising, rebuilding the entire site, we were able to actually intensify the quantity of screening and buffering to the site. Not that the surrounding land uses would be inappropriate per se, that primarily commercial in nature. But once again, we really wanted to green up the site and and to enhance it from a landscaping perspective. Signage will be very minimal. We don't need signage. Everybody will. The people coming to the site will realize what the, what the purpose of the site is. And then once again, we meet all of the setback requirements, all of the open space requirements, and those are the. And those are the last few we realize full dimensional compliance. In my professional opinion, I think we have met all of the requisite standards. For the granting of the special use permit, both of the specific use and the general standards. And I believe the board can feel comfortable in approving the operation. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Mr. Mental, if I may ask just a couple of quick questions based on your analysis and the summary you just gave. In your expert opinion, do you believe that the special use permit? Would alter the general character of the surrounding area at all?
No, not at all. And in fact, because of our actions and redesigning and rebuilding. And basically it could make maybe some corrections. To the site as it's been historically improved, I think we're actually bringing it more so into an accordance with the regulations.
And one more question, Mr. Rantle, and again, in your expert opinion, do you believe it would impair the intent of the purpose of the town zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan?
No, in in fact, it's interesting because there's actually a caption in your comprehensive plan. That talks about preparing for more unique type land use components and things that are coming in the future. And almost like it was anticipating these types of uses, which would make sense. Because the comprehensive plan is fairly new. And first comes your comprehensive plan and then comes your amendments to your zoning regulations to realize consistency. So you have those broad based goals and then you have these kind of more unique land uses. That are addressing your zoning orders. So I think it was well anticipated, actually.
Thank you. That's all my questions. If the board has any questions for Mr. Mental now or?
Yeah, Mr. Pimentel. Is it, were you going to talk about egress? In and out of the property? Is that is that changing as it exists now is?
Yeah, I think I think I was going to leave that more so for Mr. Bannon to address from a traffic perspective, because I think it really falls more within his field.
Perfect, okay. Board members, any questions for Mr. Pimentel? Pimentel. Not yet. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So if I may, I ask that. Mr. Bannon testify as a traffic expert, Mr. Bannon, I believe is here, I see him in one of the squares here. If he could unmute. So, Mr. Bannon, I I'd ask that the board qualify you as an expert. If you could please indicate to the board your educational background and relevant experience.
I. Have a bachelor science degree in civil environmental engineering from. University of Rhode Island. I've been practicing in the field of transportation engineering for the last 36 years in working for. Private development. Private consulting engineering firm. Working on department transportation projects. Working with municipalities and working on private development projects such as this one.
And Mr. Bannon, have you testified as an expert, as a traffic expert before this or any other board?
Yes, I've testified before this board, the planning board, town council in South Kingston and in in over 40 communities in Rhode Island. In Massachusetts in my 36 plus years.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Mr. Chairman, if I may ask that he be accepted as a traffic expert for his testimony this evening.
Absolutely, Mr. Bannon. Could you please state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Paul Bannon.
Okay.
And. A N N O N.
Oh, okay. And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Bannon, you prepared your traffic analysis, which was part of your report, if you could just again give a summary.
Yes, I'll just give a brief summary. We've been through the TRC. The planning board. Process. And. Obtain approvals and if we're lucky in being selected. In the in the lottery, we will be submitting to the Department of Transportation for some minor. Modifications for regarding our access. On Route 108. In order to complete our study, we first conduct a review of the project plans that were prepared. By Mr. Moorhead. To determine or obtain an understanding what the existing and proposed conditions would be. And to ensure that safe and adequate access was being proposed for for the project and make recommendations if necessary. We inventoried the physical roadway characteristics of Kingstown Road, Route 108. And Indian Run Village access road, which will provide immediate access to the. The new business. We obtained. Record act, traffic data from the Department of Transportation for recent studies that were completed in the area. To determine traffic volumes and patterns during peak conditions. Who we obtained accident records from the South Kingston Police Department. To determine if there are any safety concerns relative to the frequency or severity of accidents in this area. We also reviewed road safety assessment that was completed by the Department of Transportation for. The Old Tower Hill Road section of the downtown area. We estimated future traffic volumes for the proposed redevelopment project. Using IT trip generation methods and also collecting data. At existing facilities in in Rhode Island, as there are three of them presently in operation. And then we evaluated. Traffic safety and operational conditions, both existing and proposed. As was indicated. The main access to the property, there are two driveways and there's a one-way circulation pattern. The entrance is on Kingstown Road, Route 108. And the egress is on Indian Run Village, which then intersects with 108 at a signalized intersection. That. Circulation pattern is to be maintained for this project. Land use in the immediate area. Is is course in nature, we're behind the existing restaurant and. Midas Car Service Center. What we've recommended is to. Put proper signage on the entrance to better delineate where the entrance is to this. To this property. That was discussed during the TRC process. Kingstown Road, it's a it's a major principal arterial. It's a. Along our property front edge, it's a transitional. And with. From three to four lanes. To the north, it's has a single lane in each direction separated by a median turning lane. That provides a refuge area to the commercial businesses along that stretch. Heading towards Old Tower Hill, that transitions to a four-lane section. With then turning lanes at the at the Old Tower Hill Road intersection. Indian Run Village, that's a short 400-foot road. Approximately 26 feet wide, undelineated 13-foot travel lanes in each direction. During peak traffic conditions. The section of road services roughly 1,600 vehicles per hour in the peak. And during that same time period, Indian Run services a low volume of 70 vehicles. We looked at the safety relative to both. Crash data historical to determine if there are any issues, but we also looked at site distance. That's a basis of of design. To ensure that the horizontal, vertical geometry of the roadways. Provides adequate sightlines to allow safe. Access and egress to the properties. Our review of the existing geometry found that sufficient size site distances are available as the roadways are relatively. Straight and level, so there are no issues relative to site distance. Trip generation. This type of business for for medical marijuana. Sales. The characteristics are generally, you know. More than 50% of the of the daily volume of customers occurs in the in the late afternoon to towards closing roughly 50%. So we just, we estimated. Based on. A. Number of patients, the population densities in this zone, including North Kingston because of proximity. We estimate that. During the peak hour, you know, maximum, and this is a high end. That we'd have anywhere between 50 and 75 customers per hour in that that one peak. But as as David had indicated, on an average hourly basis, it's, you know, the 20 to 25. Customers per hour, customers are usually accommodated in. Less than 10 minutes. Based on the operation within the the facility. Those trips. Can easily be accommodated on on that section of road. Egress is is. To Indian Run in the traffic signal, so all left turns would be made safely at a at a controlled junction. What came up during our. TRC review. Was concerns of left turn entering the site. We agreed to. Work with the Department of Transportation to extend the existing left turn lane further south. It's roughly 50 to 75 feet. That would encompass our driveway. So traffic that's turning into our site would be within the refuge lane instead of the. The interior lane of a four-lane section. Mr. Shaw can request that. So if if we are selected, we will pursue that with the Department of Transportation. To provide a. Safe left turn. Lane in that commercial section, which has been. The the current design preference. Based on on the study that was completed, we determined that safe and adequate access can be provided to this proposed development. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Board members, is there any questions for Mr. Bannon?
Yes. Tom Daniels question, Mr. Bannon.
Yes.
The testimony at max peak hours 50 to 75 cars per hour. Is that in and out or is it one way?
The one way, that's the customers.
So then. That'd be 100 to 150 in in and out in total in the peak period, is that correct?
Yes.
And would you consider it a peak period?
That would be late afternoon between 4:00 and and 6:00 PM.
Four and six, okay.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Bannon? Mr. Johnson, did you want us to ask your witness any any questions?
Yes, if I could. Just to just to clarify, Mr. Bannon, again, based on your analysis. Of the of the traffic and the projected traffic for this site. In your expert opinion, will the ingress and egress to the site have any adverse? Impact on the vehicle or pedestrian safety or convenience of the surrounding servicing roadways or parcels of land?
We feel with the proposed design and including the. Working with the Department of Transportation for the left turn lane. That it will not have an adverse impact to traffic along the section of Kingstown Road.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions from board members?
I have a question. Mr. Johnson, just wondering if you anticipate a need to have any. Employees directing traffic or aiding with any congestion that you might experience during those peak hours?
Part of our security personnel will have an exterior person dedicated exterior, which includes the parking lot for stacking, things like that. Making sure people are turning out of that entranceway and funneling into parking spaces. We did discuss this at length with Lieutenant Healy when we met him at one of our meetings. The the plan right now is for that day. We expect probably the highest traffic volume for this entire operation to be opening day, opening weekend, something along those lines. So we did discuss getting a police detail for Kingstown Road itself. In the event that it's needed, probably schedule what we had discussed was scheduling it out for four or five or six days. And then either extending that longer if it proved necessary or cutting it shorter if it if it didn't seem. Necessary and that would be at the entrance from Kingstown Road.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have a, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Daniels, yes, please.
If it's appropriate, a question for Mr. Johnson at this point.
Please.
Mr. Johnson, you're an owner, is that correct?
I am, I'm the president, yes. It's a not-for-profit corporation.
I'll ask you the question as as an owner as opposed to being the council.
Sure.
That's okay. Zone 5. How many medical marijuana cards exist in zone 5?
I don't have that information off of the top of my head. I don't believe that information for HIPAA is going to be publicly available. We did a general analysis of population. Divided by the total number of Rhode Island divided by the total number of medical marijuana cards. And then dispersed that out over over the regional population, so specifically per those towns. I I can't say I don't believe that information is publicly publicly available. If it is, I don't have it.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Johnson, is there anyone else that you wish to present?
No, no further testimony. Again, we do have Ms. Beckman, landscape architect, our project engineer. Scott Moorhead and our security expert, Sean Crowley, available if if the board has any any questions for them. At this point, no further testimony.
All right, in that case, I do have a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. I thought they might present some more witnesses, but I'll follow up with Mr. Johnson if that's okay.
Please.
Mr. Johnson, so let me understand what the process is. If I have a medical marijuana card. I come to your facility, I spend based on testimony about 10 minutes inside. I purchase a product and I leave.
That's more or less it. What happens is you arrive, assuming it's your first visit to the facility. You will be checked in and entered into our system as a as a patient. You have to present your state. Patient card as well as valid identity, you will be sub-processed into our system. At which point you're allowed into the into the facility. Once that initial, that's an initial intake process, which is somewhat short. Once that's done, it's abbreviated, it's just presenting the ID, you're processed in. A patient is logged in. And then whatever they purchase is 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 also a log that 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 purchase for that patient is also logged. And stored with DBR. The idea here is there are maximum numbers of of product that a person can buy. You don't want someone coming in and buying out your inventory to go sell on the black market or something like that. You also don't want them buying the maximum number at one location and going to a different location, a different location. So there's a centralized patient registry through DVR. There's also a centralized. For lack of a better term, inventory catalog for what a person is buying and there are certain limits based on your. Medical card that you can purchase so that the system more or less can't be be abused or used as an end around.
Okay, so once I purchase that product from your facility. I can go outside and get in my car and use it, correct?
No, not lawfully. Once you purchase, it's a one-way traffic flow inside the facility. You come in, you're registered, you purchase, at that point you exit. That's why we have a security personnel. Standing at the entry, a security person inside where the where the patients are, as well as a security person outside. The idea is to ensure that people are entering, going to the point of sale, conducting their business, leaving. And then again, outside, once they're in their vehicles, they pull off and leave. Again, we have very sophisticated, very high-tech. Security equipment and surveillance cameras. Consumption on the premises is strictly prohibited. If if. Patients are consuming the product on the premises, they will not be invited back. And by not being invited back, they are they are logged into our system. They will no longer be allowed from the security vessel into the building. And I believe I would have to confirm, but I believe they would be banned from the other. Compassion centers in the state as well.
So once they leave. With that, with your security in place, once they leave your facility. You no longer have any control over the. The customer, is that correct?
No, I mean, other than the fact that we know what they purchased, if it's being abused, everything is labeled and tagged. We're dealing mostly with cartridges for vaporizer pens, we're dealing with a lot of tinctures and ointments, all of which have a SKU, so we know who we sold it to, when we sold it to. But no, it's a practical matter.
Well, yeah, the reason I raised it, I raise these questions. And maybe you've given some consideration and can respond to it. You have a high school, what about a thousand students within? A drive and a five iron probably from your property. You have a town park. That is full of young people in the summer and year-round, actually within. A lot closer than a than a. Normal person can hit a drive. It's a just a short walk across the wetlands, across the brook. And I'm very concerned. That with that level of. Young people. I'm concerned about a secondary market. So someone may have a medical card, purchase the product. Decide to go park in the parking lot. Uh, of the the town park. And. The rest of it's obvious. I'm deeply concerned about that.
I understand, and I mean. There are a number of things I can I can touch on this. Number one is, we're all parents, we get it, we don't want our children abusing anything. We believe that a controlled point of sale, controlled tracking information through these SKUs, et cetera, is is a better. System than the system that we have in place right now. We believe that a controlled marketplace is a marketplace which mitigates. The potential for abuse, certainly the abuse of youth. When it comes to specific concerns for this site. Again, we work very close partnership with the police in the event that someone is using our products. Illegally, we have a SKU, again, we have a SKU number, which will be somewhat difficult to remove from the product. So we can track who bought it, where it came from. And know what they're doing, and again, bar them from any any further abuse of that system at our facility or any other facility. Off-site, the practical practicality of it is it becomes a police matter. We have met with Lieutenant Healy, we plan on being a member of this community. That type of nefarious activity, that type of of the resale, converting it to a black market product. It's it's bad for everything. It's bad for 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 us as as a as a company. It's bad for the industry as a whole. It's bad for the community. Again, we have children, we went to high school. We were around these things. We understand that that there's a potential for abuse, but I do feel very, very strongly. That there is a. A greater potential to mitigate potential abuse through a a controlled, through a monitored and through a responsible. Point of sale that the. D B R requires and that we have through our application to D B R as well as to the town. Promulgated. It's an issue we take seriously, and there are, you know, the schools are outside of that. Setback in the park is is not included in the setback, but we understand, we understand in any community and that in any location. Regardless of whether there's a park or there's a school nearby, there is going to be a chance for for adolescents and and young people and. People with nefarious intent to go and 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 do things. You know, we obviously wouldn't approve of, but again. Strict security measures, cooperation with the local police, SKUs on everything so we can track. And and basically, community responsibility is is something that we are are. Our intent on valuing, and we believe we could, in all likelihood, mitigate the use of of marijuana amongst youth by by pulling it out of the black market. I mean, the black market is is frankly the largest market in cannabis, and. We want to be part of the solution to that, to bring that to. Mitigate the negative effects in the community while also being able to bring the positive effects. Parkinson's treatment, cancer treatments, chronic pain alleviation without some of the side effects that that opiates and other drugs have. So this is a, this is a medical site. We understand there are side effects to this. We want to be responsible players. And we're. Required to be responsible players by the by the regulations, but above and beyond that, that's kind of core to our values, core to our mission statement, so. I don't know specifically if if I've if I've alleviated your concern, but. That's certainly a conversation we've been having internally and a conversation we continue to have and a conversation we'll have to have. With local police and 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 community leaders as well.
I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the. The need for what you're doing and for the medical aspects. My. Role, I believe, is to look at the location. Of where we would approve. A facility at our level. And 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 my feeling is that it's just simply too close. To a population, a huge population of young people. High school. Playing fields. Bowling alleys. That's my concern, the location. It's not about the medical aspect of what your business is about. About your security or about anything else, but once a a person, customer leaves your premises. You you don't have that control. And that's, to me, is in an area that I'm deeply concerned about.
The, I just want to point out that the the high school most likely will be moving across town.
It what? Say what?
The high school, there's a plan to move the high school off of Curtis Corner Road.
Yeah, that plan is four years out at least.
So, Mr., um.
And Old Mountain Field is not going to move anytime soon.
And and just to 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 make sure this is the case, if for some reason, meta- uh, recreational. Is approved in Rhode Island, would this facility be able to sell recreationally?
I just want to, this is Amy. Um, Rob, I just want to assure you, and and David, you may or may not be aware of this. Um, the town is going to be moving to amend its zoning ordinance. To make that explicit. So I think this came up several months ago when we reviewed. A previous compassion center special use permit. And I can't recall if we made it an explicit condition of approval, but I know we discussed it, and I gave my opinion that. That would change the nature of the use such that. It would require an amended special use permit. Uh, we recently discussed it internally, you know, that will have to go through planning board advisory and obviously town council approval. But that's the direction that the town is going to be moving in.
Thank you. That was my understanding as well, that this is a for medical sales. That's what's allowed under the law, any any change in use for. Recreational would have to go. As a as a separate special use permit, that that was our base understanding from initial conversations in the summer and in the spring with, uh, Ms. Collins.
And Mr. Uh, Mr. Johnson, is it it's fairly explicit within the D B R's expectations of locations to. Recreational as well as educational facilities in terms of placement of these?
So there's no recreational is currently not allowed, so there's no.
I mean, sorry, for the medicinal.
Yeah, so so medicinal is is, the regulations are, it has to be allowed pursuant to the local ordinance. Town and city ordinance, and has to be with a thousand feet outside of the, similar to South Kingstown's ordinance, thousand feet away from a pre-existing. School, so those are the location requirements pursuant to D B R. As far, then there are additional premises requirements. Regarding the security, the safety, the surveillance, lighting, things of that nature, which we have have presented previously.
So i- if if, let's say, the security officer views a a group coming into the parking lot with a. Do they have the right to refuse certain customers sort of based on? Any criteria besides?
Well, it's it's private property, they have to have a legitimate business interest to be there, so if their card, if they're if they're patients. Or or they're they're qualified patients or they're, you know, someone driving a qualified patient to the facility, something along those nature, then yes, they have a legitimate business interest and they can stay. If they don't have a legitimate business interest to be there, then no, they they'll have to leave the premises, and our security personnel could. Could ask them to do that. It is public and so far that that it's, you know, it's it's a parking lot, it's open to people to drive into, but. They have to be there for for a reason. Furthermore, there's no pursuant to the premises requirements. You 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 won't be able to see inside of this facility, full blackout windows. The look like normal windows with with a deep tint. So it's not like people are going to come window shopping, there's no cannabis out in public view, et cetera. You order basically from a menu, think of. Like a sushi restaurant, so to speak. You order from a menu, it's the the product is brought from the vault. To the point of sale, processed at the point of sale, and then the person leaves. It has to be concealed in a bag, it can't be visible on site. Brought to their vehicles or or taken off-site, and again, it's it's illegal to consume in public, certainly illegal to resale. So that's something that we work with our security team as well as local P D. To to deal with if there's any of those issues which come up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Daniels, you have more questions for?
Uh, not at this point.
Okay.
I have a quick question, this is, uh, Mr. Mark. Um, under, I'm not sure if Amy or Jamie, but, uh, under five oh four, does the two thousand feet to any other facility apply? And would that? I'm not sure, does that cross over or meet? You know, the place that's on Columbia Street or? In any future decisions with the chance of like a previous applicant? Is there only going to be one within a certain?
So so this is, um, Amy, um. Under the current law. And D B R regs, only one license. Is allowed in, I think it was zone five, you said, um, in the zone in which South Kingstown is in, so South Kingstown and the other towns. Collectively, only one license will eventually be issued by the D B R. So it may be in South Kingstown, it may not be, but under the law as it stands, no more than one can exist. The law can change any time, and it does certainly in this area. Um, frequently, so if at some point in the future. The state authorizes additional compassion center licenses for the town or this this zone. Then will we visit, the the town council may find it appropriate to revisit that. Distance. At this point, my understanding is that it does not. That. That distance is satisfied.
Okay. But I have one question. It does still exist. The two thousand feet. One one thousand feet of. Just similar, but two thousand feet from any other. Marijuana retail facility or cultivation.
Um, you know, as you're mentioning it, I'm I'm not sure, are you looking at a printed copy of the ordinance?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, because the council did amend the ordinance relative to that distance, and I'm not sure if that's the one. That, um. That was removed, or if that was for the use code of cultivation center. Um, I'm going to have to look into that now, so give me a minute, please.
So my understanding is it's two thousand feet from any of the marijuana retail facility, marijuana cultivation facility. We did an analysis at the planning board level. As well as, again, recently, there there are licensed cultivators are not within two thousand feet, and there are obviously no current marijuana retail facilities. In in the town, so we satisfy that requirement. The the cultivators are. Some distance away, I believe the closest one was about a mile and a half or so to the to the northwest.
The one on Penn Station.
Yeah, that's the one I'm I'm thinking of. I I believe that there's, there's two or three of them right up in that area. And I know, I think that's what Amy might be referring to, I believe. Because they wanted to have a couple of them in that area, that it was, the ordinance may have been revised, but I think I'm probably looking at the same ordinance you are.
Yes.
Thousand feet.
Thanks, th- thank you, and I just reviewed clerk base and refreshed my memory from a couple of years ago, it was August twenty eighteen. The council reduced that separation distance and in. Five oh four point fifteen from two thousand feet to fifteen hundred feet, so if you're looking at a printed copy, the ordinance that refers to a two thousand foot separation distance. Or marijuana retail or cultivation facilities, it's now fifteen hundred feet.
Okay.
I have one question.
I I would like a question. Now that all the difficult questions have been answered, let me ask. A patient comes in, is he he or she limited to the, to a maximum amount? Of one product?
Uh, none of one product, it depends on the product, but there are there are certain limitations, and there's equivalency tables for what you're you're having. So when you think of cannabis, a lot of people think of of the flower. But the vast majority of these sales in medical are are tinctures, ointments, vapor cartridges for for vaporizer pens, things of that nature. So there is a general equivalent, excuse me, an equivalency table. For the different types of products that they have, and there are restrictions on how much one person can purchase at a given time.
Okay, one other question. If you do not succeed in the lottery, what happens to the property then?
That would be a good question for Mr. Clark. I I don't know, he, I know it's been for sale for quite a while, I believe he has a couple of backup offers, he's he's waiting on. Results, that's the last I heard when I spoke with him. We we haven't talked about alternate plans for the property, I don't like to think about that all that much, frankly. But I I don't know, unfortunately.
And and. Bill, this is.
Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks. So let's say the lottery happens in twenty twenty-one, which I think is the expectation, right? I don't know if it's a matter of. A a couple of months or several months, but I think the expectation is the lottery is going to happen in twenty twenty-one, the licenses will be awarded, and in theory. Some of the new places could be up and running, perhaps by the end of the year, certainly next year. But if the board grants this special use permit, it would be a conditional approval with a two-year expiration date. As we discussed earlier, because it's dependent on the issuance of a state license. Um, so it's possible that. This year, the law could change, and the General Assembly could authorize, you know. Unlimited numbers of compassion centers, or if not unlimited, you know, more than just one in this. D B R defined zone, so the answer is at least while that special use permit is potentially alive. The owner would have a vested right to operate a compassion center there. Um, but I think your question was, I I think the applicant answered the question you were really asking.
Thank you. That's where I was going, yeah.
Is that it?
That's the, I'm done.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Have a question.
Yes.
If you could, Mr. Johnson. You know, if you could elaborate a bit on on how you think the. The state regulations in terms of. You know, restricting the quantities people can buy and and tracking and all these other things. How does that, you know, impact the ability for your patients to go, you know, to Old Mountain Field and resell the the products there? Is there like, I understand that, I think there's a a limit, you know, per visit, but. Could somebody, is it a monthly basis, is it a quarterly basis, you know, if you could elaborate on this, it would be great.
So limitations are actually weekly, and. The idea is that if someone's buying a certain amount of product in a given week from the current three or the proposed nine. That will be flagged, and they will be discontinued. They they won't be allowed back if they try to come into facilities repeatedly. They won't be allowed back in. This market is not ideal for the resale, frankly, it's a lot more expensive than it is on the black market. So it wouldn't, economically, we don't believe it would make any sense for that type of activity. To happen, there's just no real motivation for it. More importantly, those tracking items that we have make it very easy for us to catch someone who is abusing the system. We know when they bought it, we have them on camera. We know when they bought it, we have them on camera buying it, putting it in their bag. We have them on camera walking in the back of their car when they left. When that shows up in the wrong hands. It's it's pretty easy to track what they did, get it back to them. And certainly, when. If, for example, ended up in the hands of a minor as an example, and and that minor was stopped by the police and it was confiscated. And that SKU came back to to our store. The person who bought it would certainly be investigated by our security personnel as well as the police. But also they would be prohibited from purchasing from us or from any other compassion center. In in the state. So I'm not entirely clear if that answers all your question. I apologize if I went on a tangent there.
No, that that addresses it. Thank you. That's all I had, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other board members' questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Johnson, is that it?
That's it for me, absent any further questions.
Okay, great. So Jessica, do you want to remind folks as to how they raise their hands if they want to ask a question?
Sure. So if you're on your computer, if you hover over the three little buttons, it'll say the word more. You can click the raise hand function there. If you're calling in by phone, it is star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. And right now, Mr. Chairman, I have Catherine Savage.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. So I represent Costanza Realty, which is the owner of 667 Kingstown Road, one of the abutters that got noticed for this hearing. And I just have a few questions that I'm hoping the the applicant can answer.
Sure. So you're their attorney?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so why don't you ask us and then and then we can ask the applicant? The questions.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So the site plans show a patient care room. And I I think you may have addressed this, but I just want to make sure that I understand that that would be used for intake. Not for for any type of use on premises of any kind. It would, it's just the intake room. So that's the first question.
Okay.
I didn't understand, and I may have just missed it from Mr. Bannon. But I I'm wondering if he can speak to how much traffic is expected to increase over its current levels. From the 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 property's use right now, knowing that Clark Farms has sort of been on the market. And so, you know, is 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 maybe not as. Busy as it once was, you know, how how, what's the delta there?
Not not over it being technically abandoned, but during its use.
Exactly. Exactly. And then the the property is a location, is a large plot of land. And, you know, we appreciate the the substantial revegetation that's going on. But it was previously used as a nursery and I'm curious if there's any intention to. You know, if state law changes to change or add a use to turn this into a growth facility, a cultivation facility. As well as a retail facility. So those are the three questions.
Oh, okay, great. So, all right, we'll we'll go through them one by one. Mister. Mister Johnson, I know you mentioned that there's no permitted use on site of consumption of any sort. Either edible or vape or flour or any other consumption is not allowed anywhere.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's no tasting rooms, there's no, you know, anything like that.
No, no.
It's nothing.
No, not at all.
No outdoor porches, no, no, nothing like that.
No, no.
And we'll jump to the 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 third one. The your your intention, it sounds like, is to take down any structure that's on that property, including the greenhouses and rebuild completely.
That's correct. We there would, one, it it's not allowed under the current code. I I believe cultivation is not allowed in that district by the zoning ordinance. Two, it it practically doesn't make sense. There's no room. Once we. The site plan has a pretty limited buffer around it. That's because there's wetlands in the back that we're pulling out of those buffers. So as a practical matter, while it is large, most of it is unusable. Either wetlands or in the wetlands buffer. Therefore, there wouldn't any be any practical space for a, if the code were to change to allow cultivation. There wouldn't be any room to to construct a facility for for cultivation. And if I if I may quickly get back to the patient care room.
Please.
That's for, it is for intake. It's also for patient education, treatment plans, an RN. Oftentimes will put together a treatment plan for a patient and determine what's working, what's not working. For instance, if there's a Parkinson's patient. We they may say, okay, this helps with tremors or or muscle pain or muscle aches. But has certain side effects that we don't like. So we may try a different treatment. We may try up or down. Similar to what you would do with a physician, but basically a way to help a lot of these patients track what they've done over a course of time. It's like a care plan, track what you've done over a course of time, so you know how to chart that that path forward. We're dealing with a population that oftentimes, you know, they're dealing with chronic pain and and severe and profound diagnoses. So. More or less kind of a helping hand to come in and say, this is what we've done. It's worked. It hasn't worked. This is a potential way forward is is what those rooms are for. They're not. Sampling rooms, things of that nature. Again, nothing is to be consumed on on site.
And and it it's not to say also that that all the products being sold are are mind altering, you know, high THC content. There are many that that can have a higher CBD and lower THC that have a little effect. Outside of their medicinal ones, but but don't have the same, what we'd expect of, you know, your typical marijuana.
Yeah, that that's exactly right. And that's why flower is not the primary sale. It's it's typically tinctures and and cartridges and things of that nature.
Where they're reducing the amount of the psychotropic effect of the THC.
You know, I don't want to, I mean, yes, as a general answer, I don't want to weigh into this as as an expert as far as what the actual product. You you know what the THC contents are, they're the everything is lab tested. But as I mean, as a general rule, yes, certain strains are grown for certain effects. Some of them perhaps better for chronic pain management, things like that may have a lower psychotropic effect. Whereas if you're dealing with tremors and other neurological issues, you're you're going to have something that's going to have a higher psychological impact. THC, for example, but maybe more effective to treat certain certain ailments and certain issues.
Okay. And so the second question was. The was related to Mr. Bannon and if we knew of any history of the site in terms of vehicle activity.
We don't have any preexisting. Information on on that site. You know, typically it it's a summer condition for that type of land use. So, you know, this time of year, the nursery is typically closed. So, but I I believe it was a busy nursery at at one time over the decades of its of its operation. We anticipate, and you know, these types of facilities based on our our research. Would do about 200 to 300 customers per day. So you distribute that over the course of the day, and that's where Mr. Johnson indicated. No, on average, it's it's 20 customers an hour or so. Where I look at and say, okay, you know, if it's concentrated, it's not evenly distributed. That worst case scenario or peak would be the the 50 to 75.
If I may provide a little insight, I've spoken on this with Mr. Clark several times. He's looking at sales records. He doesn't have a trip count, but just based on sales records. Christmas was actually Christmas trees, ornaments, things like that was actually his busiest time there. He was dealing with several hundred vehicles per day. He was doing something like three to 400 transactions a day in that early December. In Christmas. It's not scientific. I don't have data to to back it up. But just for Ms. Savage's. Point, that's what we had I had discussed with Mr. Mr. Clark. This was going back to the fall when we were at the development plan review stage.
And. Mister Johnson, so in in terms of, I mean, obviously, as business folks, you're going to understand sort of the traffic flow for other facilities. Just to make sure the facility is viable. So you're finding that these numbers that you're presenting to the averages as well as to the excesses are are within sort of the other facilities? The experience they're they're having?
That's based, some of this information is found in Mr. Bannon's report. That's based on observations for Massachusetts and Rhode Island. It's also based, we work with a consulting firm out of out of Maine. It's also based with some of their findings that. The turn times on a customer is five to 10 minutes. We're expecting roughly 10 vehicles in the lot at any time. And again, that 20 number was something that we're thinking is is probably the absolute maximum peak for that. Really, for the grand opening, I can't think of any other major events we we would be having. But the turn times here are reasonably fast and it's reasonably staggered. Another thing I will mention is. Online preordering is one of the things that this pandemic has given us that that may not be the worst thing in the world. A lot of this business model has moved to preordering online, so the trip time is even shorter currently. Curbside delivery is is available. And it's something that if that stays in the regulations post COVID is something we would we would encourage and 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 do. In order to. Basically, keep the traffic flow moving and keep those those trip numbers and that traffic flow, you know, reasonable and and and. Again, not not a burden to the service of roadways.
Yeah, and subsequent to our our initial submission, we counted all three facilities in Rhode Island. For peak hour trips. And and just for reference, you know, all the total of the three facilities. Results in a peak hour, worst case condition of of 720 total trips. That's 350, thereabout, entering and exiting during that hour. That's the three existing facilities. That's all going to be distributed over nine facilities across the state. So. That's the customer base that's being serviced, the 20,000. Plus or minus medical marijuana car holders. So they're being serviced in those three facilities and that's the kind of number you're getting. So that's going to be diluted by an additional six facilities.
And and to be clear, that 300 was a culmination of the three existing facilities. It wasn't at one facility.
You're talking a million population and 20 plus thousand car holders. Comparison.
Thank you. Anything else? Is that? Okay, Ms. Savage, does that sort of answer those concerns, questions you have?
Yes, it does. That's great.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have any other questions for them at this point?
No, I think that covers it. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Jessica, anyone else out there that?
No, no one else.
Okay. So. Anything to add, Mr. Johnson, or you?
No, not at this time. I mean, just a general statement that, you know, we are, again, hopeful that we are successful at DBR. And we understand that the risks associated with type of use. But. We believe very strongly. That. A controlled. Controlled sale of this product is the best way to mitigate potential abuse from youth or from anyone else. We think we feel very strongly that that this is part of a solution to to an ongoing problem versus part of a. A continuation of the problem or or a worsening of the problem. And and to that end, you know, again, as parents, as members of of the community, we're all residents. I I shouldn't admit this, but I live in North Kingstown. You know, we're all dedicated to to this community. We're dedicated to the state. And it's not something, you know, we want to be part of that solution. So I understand there's there's concerns and we're we're dealing with, you know, centuries of dogma as far as as far as the product is concerned. So it's a bit of an uphill battle, but we're hoping we can. We're hoping we can bring the positive effects of this product to the community and as well as help mitigate the negative and adverse impact impacts to this community. So it's just more or less a general statement, you know, as far as the the mindset and the mission of 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 this company.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, board members, if there aren't any other questions for the applicant or anyone else. Mister Daniels, how are you feeling about this?
Well, I think you understood my earlier concerns. I'll add to that by. Saying that we realize, of course, that there is also a high population directly adjacent as in a butter. To this property in the Indian Run Village. I mentioned the high school. I mentioned the. The park. All highly populated areas at certain times of the year. And my concern is the secondary market. That's my concern. I understand the medical. Nature and the the need and the requirement. But we're also dealing with three to 4,000, based on recent testimony from Mr. Bannon, who estimates 20,000. If we look at six zones, that's three to 4,000 car holders, perhaps in zone five. We're not just talking about South Kingstown people. We're talking about people coming from Westerly, from Charlestown, from Narragansett, from Richmond. And we're talking about increased traffic and we haven't talked a great deal about that amount of traffic. But if you look at the peak hours based on testimony. Two hours, four to six, 150 cars peak. That's 300 additional vehicles in and out. In in two hour period and in that two hour period from four to six. If anyone knows what it's like at the intersection of Old Tower Hill Road and Kingstown Road, we all do, I think. Is the busiest time of day. This is going to add in in. A high increase of traffic, turning. Leaving, entering. And this is not a, this is not a situation where traffic is entering, spending an hour or two and leaving. It's in and out, in and out, in and out. So I think the impact of traffic as well as my other concerns. Need to be, need to be considered here. And I I just don't think this. Granting this special use permit is consistent with the general character of the area. That's. I I have, I'm going to have a hard time voting to approve. I'll listen to the other members, of course.
Mister Rosen, how do you feel?
Well, I. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember that we approved a compassion center. In the rest, the now defunct restaurant right in front of this.
Correct.
And the chances of either one of those compassion centers actually. Getting a license is is low since there's only, as I heard it, there were only, there are 10. Licenses to be, no, 10, 10 individual companies trying to get license for in the South Kingstown area. It's a lottery. The chances are low. We've already approved one. I don't have any problem with approving this one.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mark?
I'd say I I would more so echo Bill's. Analysis. And I think that it's a. What we're here to decide is, you know, for a special use permit, I think they've. Created like an exhaustive. Portfolio of. Reasons to. So that's right. I kind of feel the same way as Bill.
Okay. And Mister Chuckerwick?
Yeah, I'm inclined to approve this. I think, you know, the concerns as to secondary market sales, I think, are pretty far attenuated. You know, there's no retailer that has control of the customer when they leave the the premises. So I I don't think it's fair to impose a heightened standard on them just because of the nature of the product they they're proposing to sell. You know, I think the fact that there's a liquor store, you know, close by. Um, you know, I think the fact that there's a liquor store, you know, close by uh it, you know, presents at least an equal uh threat to, to the young community. And, you know, I'm a father of three. I, I'm concerned about this as well. Um, I agree with the applicant. I think that the best way to control this stuff is to do it through a you know, a controlled marketplace where purchases are tracked and, you know, if, if it ends up in the wrong hands, you could find out how they got it and, and hold the, you know, the people accountable. Um, my biggest concern really was the traffic, but it seems like they're already, I mean, they've gone above and beyond to um provide an exhaustive record uh which includes a lot of traffic information and, and they've already expressed their willingness to work with uh Department of Transportation, you know, to, to ease the um, the impact that, that this would have on the, the left turns. So uh, for those reasons, I, I would, I would approve this.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I, I tend to agree with the majority of the board um in terms of the uh, um, this has been researched quite a bit uh in the Department of uh Business Regulation is, is, is very explicit and, and thorough in their expectations of these facilities. Um, they're, they're one of the higher regulated uh facilities in terms of uh product. Um, and then I also feel that they uh, the, the applicant has met its burden in terms of uh, uh movement of traffic. I thought um, I, in fact, I think this is better than, than the Bobby G's location in front. Um, because if, if they do get more vehicles than, than they expect, uh, than the forty-five, it sounds like it can be managed off-street. Um, and uh, so uh, and everything else, I feel like that they've, they've uh uh improved the site um in terms of its uh aesthetics as, as well, if it's lighting and, and so forth. So um, I'd be inclined to approve as well. So um with that, is there, is there anyone that would like to uh make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I guess. Um.
If, if you're uncomfortable at all and uh you need some assistance, don't, don't feel free to.
I understand. Uh, the chairman presented uh a description of the petition of the Rhode Island Care Concepts Incorporated. Uh, care of David L. Johnson, uh fifteen circle East Providence, Rhode Island oh two nine one five for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance. Uh, the chairman also listed a number of, of uh documents that had been received by the committee. Among them, the zoning board application itself, uh owner authorization form, uh site plan, uh, pro- proposed floor plans and uh elevations, et cetera. Uh, speaking for the petition was attorney David L. Johnson, who's not only the attorney, but the owner of the property. He uh gave a summary of the application in terms of traffic ingress and egress, which was later supported by uh a Mr. Bannon. Uh, he also talked about parking, uh, lighting, security. The fact that this is medical marijuana and not a cultiv- cultivar uh site. Retail sales will only uh, will only be allowed uh and uh there's no manufacturing, uh, et cetera. Mr. Ed Pe- Pimentel was introduced. Uh, he's a land use planning and zoning individual. Uh, he talked about the specific standards and the general standards associated with the, the product being distributed, the zoning, et cetera. And uh, he's appeared before the board on a number of occasions. I remember him uh appearing before this board and seems to be familiar with what is going on. Mr. Paul Bannon also appeared before the board. He's a traffic engineer. He gave a, a summary of the traffic report that he introduced uh, extensive traffic report. We've heard the uh a similar traffic of, uh, report previously uh in terms of how traffic would ingress uh in one it, opening and uh e- egress out in another uh onto a different road, although of course Kingston Road itself would be impacted by traffic going in and out uh from particularly during the uh peak hours of uh four to six, when they were expecting fifty to seventy-five possible uh customers coming in. Uh, there was only one person that spoke from outside. Uh, that was a Catherine Savage. She apparent, I didn't quite get what she was, but I think she's a attorney for in a butter. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, and she had several questions which seemed to be answered uh by uh David L. Johnson and Mr. Bannon uh to her satisfaction and as such, um, there is the problem with uh a patient coming in and then uh illegally or in some way uh distributing the uh product away from the facility. There seems to be appropriate security associated with that, as Mr. Johnson indicated, and uh yeah, I think it's about as far as he can go. So as a consequence, I would move to approve uh the petition uh and say that uh the board finds that the special use permit is not, is specifically authorized by this ordinance because uh it, well, here's where I have some problems because it uh it fits within the uh, the ordinance as the town council has approved it uh for a special use permit. The board finds that the special use does not meet, uh, does meet all the criteria set forth as the subsection of this ordinance authorizing such special use uh because all the uh uh descriptions and accounts associated with this and the paperwork has been completed. And uh furthermore, uh, it's going into a lottery system, and so the chances uh that it will be approved are only ten percent in, in case of the zone that we live in. Board finds the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. In so doing, the board has considered whether or not satisfactory positions and arrangements have been and will be made concerning, but not uh limited to the following matters where applicable. Ingress and egress to the lot and the existing or proposed structures thereon with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire, emergency and catastrophe. Number two, off-street parking and loading areas where, where required. The particular attention to the items of subsection A one above and the noise, glare and odor effects of the special use permit on adjoining lots. Number three, trash storage and delivery areas with particular reference to the items in one and two above. Utilities in reference to locations, availability and compatibility. Signs of any, which there are none, and exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic safety and compatibility and harmony with lots in the zoning districts have been uh uh thoroughly investigated and appear to uh meet the standards. Required yards and other open space. Uh, this is a uh fairly large uh area, but it's mainly uh environmentally sensitive and the actual facility is only going to appear on a very small percentage of the, of the lot. And general compatibility with lots in the same and abutting zoning districts because uh well, because uh there is another uh uh facility that has already been approved by this board uh and they're no, they are very, very close to each other and all the things that are applied in that description must apply here. So are, is the approval subject to condition, Amy?
This is Amy. It is not, but do please mention that it is conditional, so it will have a two-year expiration date.
Okay, so approval is subject to the condition that it will have a two-year completion date uh rather than the one year. And thus I move uh to approve.
Great job. Thank you. Uh, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, second by Mr. Chalkwick. Uh, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Chalkwick?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, hi. Uh, motion passes. Good luck. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, well, we uh, we didn't do as well as we thought we would tonight. Um, we were only halfway through our agenda. And uh, uh, there's, there's just no way we can finish all of them tonight. Um, we've set our, our standard to be around ten o'clock. Um, which is always worse in the wintertime. It feels like in the summer I can go a little bit longer, but uh, so um I'm of mind to, to say that, that we'll have to do another meeting. Um, and I think if we can certainly get quorum as well as uh not too much disagreement amongst the crowd um that we can continue it until next week, if that's possible, next Wednesday. Um, I apologize for everybody who's been on the phone and, and there uh waiting. Um, it's much better than being there and play in person and waiting. Um, but do, do all the members, will everyone be able to be here next week? If, if we do that, Mr. Mark, Mr. Rosen, Mr. Chalkwick?
I, I will be here. I'm not going anywhere.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Jessica and um Amy, is that, is that all right? If we?
That works for me.
That's fine. Is Mr. Chalkwick available?
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Sorry, everybody that's been waiting. Um, but it's a, it's just hard for us to, to give at least another two hours, I think, would, would it would take to get through this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pardon me, Attorney Hogan here. How are you this evening?
Yes, thank you.
So I have to appear in uh Charlestown next week. Um, planning. I don't know where I am on the agenda. So I guess I would have to say would be tentative for us and hopefully I can dispose of that quickly and then jump back onto this screen. Would that work for you?
That's fine with me. Um, I don't know if you have uh, if, if it'd be helpful for you to just let us know. I could always move you up or back depending on what you stand within Charleston. Um, you can certainly reach out to Jessica if you know that uh and she can swap around the schedule as, as, as is fit.
I, I do have to move after that meeting because I am actually with the clients in their home this evening. So um, I'll move from my home to their home about like twelve minutes or something.
Okay, well, sorry.
Fun. Zooming is so much fun.
Yes, it is. Well, that and a glass of wine. Um.
Thanks.
Chairman, what I would suggest um is that we move uh Attorney Hogan's petition to third to give her a little bit of time to, you know, get through planning and travel back and forth. And in the event that by the time that petition is called, if she just can't make it and I can be in contact with um Attorney Hogan during the weekend, give her contact numbers to be in touch with me, we would continue it until the February hearing.
Does that work?
Yes.
For everybody? Okay, great. Um, anyone else uh on the call that, that needs a special consideration or, or concerns? If not, next week. Uh, Jessica, you wouldn't be sending out any notices or anything like that. It's
So, well, I will be sending out a new invite because the, the Zoom hearing for the, the tentative meetings has a different member ID, uh, meeting ID, I'm sorry, than this one does. So everyone should be getting a different email from the town of South Kingston to attend the meeting. You, you won't be able to use the link you signed on tonight. It won't work. So I will be sending out new ones tomorrow.
Yeah, so no new a butter notices, but there will be a new agenda posted in accordance with open meetings on the town's website, clerk base and the Secretary of State.
Great.
And that will have the updated webinar ID number on it also.
Great.
Okay.
Um, so uh, we'll need a motion to continue the three uh till uh next week. The twenty-seventh?
Move to continue the, this meeting to January twenty-seventh, two thousand, no, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. I gotta get it correct.
Excellent. Okay, can I hear a second?
But could we just, could we just state though, I'm sorry, before we do the motion, let's just state, we don't have to read the whole item, but the three addresses that we're talking about, maybe the addresses and the applicant names.
Do you want that in the motion?
Yeah, that's, well, let's just, so anybody who's on the call is, is unsure. It's sixty-eight Potter Road, Leonard, seven oh five Middle Bridge Road, Dougherty and one thirty-three Browning Street, Booth Care of RCM Builders. I think I have that right, Jess?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you agree with that, Mr. Rosen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, um, and do we want to? We can take the time at least for the December sixteenth minutes. Can show up. Uh, is there anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes for December sixteen?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rosen, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Um, and is there anything else, Jessica or, or Amy that we need to cover for tonight?
Not that I am aware of.
Did we go through attendance for February?
I, I was just going to wait till next week to do that. Um, there is the matter of recusals, Amy. Do you still want to talk about that? Or do you want to maybe plan that next week? Because it shouldn't be that long an, an evening next week, so I could put that on the agenda for you to discuss recusing with the board?
Yes, yes, sure. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll put that on next week's agenda then.
Please.
Back to on my end.
Thank you, everybody. I um
Thank you.
And uh, so uh, without anything else, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Great. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Great. Thank you all.
Good night. See you next week.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. See you next week.
Take care.